Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is the approval of the agenda. Two things I want to add to this under miscellaneous. Just have a quick comment about the notice we got from Holly Township on their master plan. So we'll put that under miscellaneous and then have a quick conversation about the workshop next week. So we'll do those. Based on those two additions, is there anything else? Have no additional comments, I'll move to approve the agenda.
As amended.
As amended. Is there support?
Support.
Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, the motion, the agenda carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the March 12th regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Motion to support for the approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Now, we're gonna make a motion to...
We're gonna have a call, you gotta do a call to the public.
Oh, call the public first, I'm here already joking. Alright, now we... Before we get into the public hearing, we're gonna do a call to the public. Does anyone have anything to do? And this is something that we just want to talk about, things that are on the agenda for tonight. At the end of the meeting, there'll be a chance to discuss anything else that's not on the agenda. So if you have something... There will be a comment period in the public hearing as well. So you have an additional time to talk about that item. And we're gonna limit it to three minutes because we got a lot of people in the audience. Does anyone like to make a...
I'm here on behalf of the caregiver. I'm not sure if this is the time for if I'm gonna talk or if I'm supposed to...
That'll be when we start the...
Could you turn your microphone up a little bit, please? Or a little closer to the right of the phone, it's real hard to hear, Vic.
I'll try that, okay. Would anyone like to make any comments on the call to the public?
Yes, I would, but I'd keep going first.
So, master plan, saw the response from the county. Pretty scathing response against you and our consultants over here that you just don't listen to the residents. Have you guys read it? Show of hands, nobody's read it? The comments from Livingston County on the master plan that you submitted? It's quite amazing, you know? We've been saying these things for months. Consultant can't even consult you that that's what you should be looking at. And here it is. You have to wait until you submit it to the county. And the county can tell you exactly what the residents have been saying about this master plan and how it lacks. It's lacking so many things in so many areas. I hope you feel convicted to start listening to the residents and implementing. But I understand you don't want to, I understand, that's very clear. You have no intention to listen to the residents, none. You know why I know that? Because your actions and what's in the plan and what's in the ordinances don't reflect anything about listening to the residents. So, keep up the terrible work. You guys are doing a terrible job with regard to listening because you don't listen and you don't talk to us. That's the bigger issue. You don't want to hold a town hall where you actually have to answer questions from the residents. "Oh yes, I'll sit up there bored, that's pretty nice, be bored, I don't really care." That's your attitude. Start listening to the residents and you'll start to see things change around here as far as the attitude toward your lack of action. Your lack of action. Someday, maybe you'll understand that. I don't have a high confidence that you will, but someday, maybe you will. But because the township doesn't stand up for the residents and doesn't listen and isn't interested in your, in the input, that's perfectly fine. I will tell you though, that from a perspective of trying to stop the solar ordinances to get the law changed, I have a petition to get on the ballot in my truck more than a hundred feet away from the township halls. Don't worry, I'm within regulation. So anybody here in this room who would like to sign that petition to stop the state of Michigan from taking over control from the township, please come after the meeting, I'll be waiting out by the black truck farther down in the parking lot. Residents will listen to us, you guys don't. And the county's response to your master, proposed master plan is an entire conviction of you and your lack of action. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Alright, please state your name too, if you would.
Steve Ackerson. It's not gonna happen for tonight, but can we start getting more than just master plan or solar utility scale? It's really hard to... You do the call to public early in the meeting and then we have these things that you may or may not vote on tonight. So I don't know where we stand with the master plan or where we stand with the utility scale or utility scale solar or wind and battery storage. So it's hard to comment on them when all I have is master plan. Like, where are we at in that? Are we voting tonight to finalize that? I don't know, do you know what I mean? That would be helpful.
Thank you.
My name's Jeanette, I'm township resident. To Steve's point, this agenda was released yesterday. And that's one of the main issues I have with the agenda. Released yesterday, yet all of the information in there has been known for quite a while. Especially about the public hearing. That part has been known for a long time. So, that's a clear example of how the transparency is being avoided. We have every right to know about these issues when the planning commission has information. And you've known about that application long before, well, let's just look back, the earliest date I could find, 11/13/23. They submitted fees in an escrow. I think you even had a meeting that day and you guys never told us about it. And you can say all day long that it's a continuation of that plan, it's not. It's new owners, it's a new application that's come up, we should have known about it. But instead, we see a little blurb in the paper, I'm like, I contacted a few people, did you even know about this that live in the neighborhood? No, they don't. One thing I'm gonna say is shame on the applicants and the whole commission. Because you guys led us to believe that you were going to look at this ordinance so that if it's something like this came up again in the future, that it would be designated to commercial area, not residential. I want you all to know that there's at least 13 age school children that stand on that corner and they get to breathe it all in, and if you laugh and say that it doesn't exist, it does. There's different cycles that this goes through. So, thank you very much. Thirteen kids get to stand there and talk about what they're breathing in in the mornings. You guys should have looked after this. And for the applicant that's coming in, if they didn't go back and listen to these meetings where the community is outraged by this being allowed in a residential area when we've got scads of land where this could be. This is horrible. Is this what we want? All of our neighborhoods to be, "Oh, guess what, there's another care facility going up." No, it's right next door to me, yay. If anybody thinks that this is some great thing that they're doing, six patients or whatever it is and all this money that's being thrown into it, think again, this is not what it's about. Do you remember when the board had a lawyer, Bob Bazoff brought a lawyer with him to a meeting and she spoke about it? She said, "Absolutely, get it out of the residential." And you guys didn't listen. And to Chris's point, you don't listen. You don't listen. You should be all ashamed of yourselves. And I tell the owners, you should be ashamed. If you live in this community, just please know, they should know, that people are opposed to it and you think about those 13 kids and maybe more kids will be there. Shameful.
Scott?
I'm gonna start the talking. Scott, Deverley Road. First of all, you don't have to apologize for being political. Mike blew that out of the water last week when they brought the political statements up. So any legalities that were broken, he broke them, that's all. Anyways, you guys, this is a whole new applicant. Things were done behind the scenes, I don't know. Anybody comes to apply here in the past, all I know is they came up, they looked, they come to the township, say, "This is what we want to do." The planning commission gets it. And they come to the planning commission and the community, tell them what their needs are, what they want to do. And you say, "Well, this is what you gotta do to conform." That didn't happen here. It's all done behind closed doors. And after you guys do that and give them direction, then you get the public hearing, that didn't happen here. This is a continuation of Mike, just blowing things, just blowing through their opening. I don't know what the legalities are, were they legal when the cops came over there? If they weren't, I talked to Steve about this earlier. If they didn't, they weren't operating illegally and they got the operation open and they haven't, didn't have their state license yet and they were doing it without anybody's approval. I know Michigan's saying it's okay to do it, but the federal government doesn't. Federal government's still crying. So you call the feds in and shut them down and prosecute. And you were gonna stop this stuff because these people just move in and start and they say, "We don't have to do anything until we're caught." Well, you know what?
Okay, fine.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine. Don't tell, don't sit there and tell them how to do it the right way because they know how to do it. You bring the feds in and say, "Okay, guys, you wanna be idiots? Here, boom, we're gonna make sure you never do it." But you know what, you guys? Jeanette's right. We had a chance to put this in a certain area when the other one pulled out. We didn't, you know why? Because these meetings just keep getting canceled. We can't get nothing done in this township. You can't just keep canceling meetings. It's ridiculous. How do you run a business like that? No business would operate like that. I'm sorry, but you know what, it just, it's incompetence. You're not representing these people that live over there. I feel sorry for them, I hope they don't go next to your house because when they come in, I say, "Yeah, put it there, please." Because you deserve it. And the worst part about it, it just, it just, it's just terrible. I feel sorry for these people.
CJ Callahan, 9225 Fawcett Road. I'm two doors from 9165 where this marijuana business wants to go in. When I was 16 years old, an old farmer next door, him and his wife brought this kid out of Detroit because his mom and dad couldn't handle it. In fact, it was the gentleman's son. So out comes the kid. So after about eight months of being in school selling drugs, more state police than I'd ever seen in my life. I lived on a dirt road, obviously, but came there because grandmother found the stuff in his bedroom and she turned him in and he went to prison. And now, whatever number of years that's been, 50 something, we're encouraging our kids to take drugs. It's stupid, stupid. We need you guys to help us. We've been through this before, we don't want it there. And I need somebody to show me, because I was in business for a long, long time and made a lot of money, how you can have six caregivers and, or people that you're selling marijuana to and put all the money into that property, into that building, and at the end of the day say, "Oh yeah, I made some money." Six people? And I wasn't born yesterday. You know, a bunch of BS and I don't want it, okay? That's my grandfather's farm and I wish to God nobody had ever sold it to let some crumb come out here and run back to Detroit or wherever it is, Novi, last time, and hide out while they destroy our area and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daisy Horrison and I live, I share, actually my driveway goes right through their property. I have been dealing with this since 2021. I know it's a new owner, but I am up here, repeat again, multiple times, talking to everybody and it's just lip service that you're giving me, "Oh, we should move it to commercial" or blah, 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 whatever. Nothing ever happens. So here we are again with a new owner, same issues going on. You know, when they came in and they bought this property, they set a precedence by doing things illegally. They already started growing marijuana, nobody cared. I made multiple phone calls to multiple people, they were going pot, you know, and they're like, "Oh, you know, there's nothing we can do about it, they just wanna, you know, pay the fines." There was a commercial generator that was on a double actual trailer that was running 24 hours a day for weeks a couple of months ago. And I had to call, I made multiple ordinances, like talked to the township and told you guys, called the police and said, "Hey, I can hear it when all my doors are shut in my bedroom on the other side of my house." Because my property's right there. I had to call the police and I finally told them. So they came out and said, "Yeah, they're growing marijuana." And I said, "Well, they don't have a permit." And that's the only reason why it got shut down and that's the only reason why there's an application right now. Otherwise, they'd continue to do it illegally because they don't care. So it makes me think like, okay, so they go through all this and have all this fancy stuff. What's changed? Who's gonna watch over this? Who's gonna make sure that they're continuing to do stuff legally? It's gonna be me, I'm gonna have to police it. And I have three little kids that will not even go down the driveway because of what's going on at the end of our driveway. Like, my kids won't even walk down the driveway by themselves. So, thank you. We were told we have to police things.
That's right. I'm not a police officer.
I don't live next to the area nearby Green and Pierce, 11 and Harp and Road. I'm not really for or against this thing, I just think there's a couple of issues that you might want to take into consideration. One is the noise that she stated about. If it's a generator, if it's fans running 24/7, that's gonna be a problem for nearby neighbors. You've got the trailer park right there as well. Smell, are there any barriers being put up, both natural or whatever, for the aroma that's going through? The trailer park's like the biggest one, but your adjacent neighbors are gonna believe that. And the other thing I think of is what's he gonna do with the aquifer? They use chemicals when they're growing, okay? They take the root balls and they dispose them, generally throw them in the ground. You're really close to Parshaville Pond there, which feeds Lake Shannon. So, need to think about what kind of chemicals are going into the aquifer there, directly into the water, which is really close, and then feeding Lake Shannon and then further on from there. Those are things that I think maybe should be asked. Is there control issues? Are these things, are there things in place that can answer those questions? Because I think they're fairly valid. Like I said, I don't live right there, but I am concerned about the aquifer. Obviously, I'm concerned about the neighbors and their feelings. I wouldn't want it in my backyard. But, you know, it's, that's up to you guys, but I think there's a few valid points you should ask questions about. Especially the aquifer, the noise factor, if they got a generator running next to her bedroom where her kids are, that's a no brainer. I'm not all enraged, but I think there's some issues that you guys should look at, maybe ask some questions before you push anything through. So, that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
Any other...
Yeah, running late. You know, this is pretty simple, they're asking for a special land use permit. If we wanted them to do this in residential areas, it would be in our master plan and ought to be available. You know, for you guys to even be considering doing something to this, a commercial business in something other than commercial area is absolutely ludicrous, should never be happening. This is a commercial business in a residential area, it should be a no brainer. Should be a simple no, we're not doing it. You want to do this, fine, move it to a commercial area and do it there. State of Michigan allows it, that's great. We're allowed to grow weed, that's their business. But it's not to be allowed in our residential areas. And if you allow this one, then I guarantee you're gonna have 50 more people coming in and doing the same thing and wanting the same thing. And then you have no way of saying no because you've already allowed it. This is very simple, it's a straight no. We don't want it in residential areas, it's a commercial business, put it in a commercial area, which we've designated in our master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, Steve Bissel, Indianview Trail. The only thing I've been thinking about lately is it's such a, from what I know, it's such a random place to want to run a commercial growing business with, like everybody said, there's so much space and so much room and probably so many opportunities to put something like that, even if it is a small operation in a more commercialized area. And to have it randomly sitting out in the country in the middle of a county or township, it just, it just doesn't make very much logical sense to me. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Any more?
Jim Collins, live on Linden Road, right around the corner from this property. And I agree with everyone's points they've made here today, so I stand with all them, but I just want to bring up one more. We built a brand new house around the corner three years ago. Part of the reason, it's zoned urban or whatever it is, but it's residential, urban, I'm not sure the term. So, I take it as a stab in the back from my government when I come out and build a house because this is what I want to live in. And then, all of a sudden, certain people are allowed to come in, start growing weed. And I think everyone here knows the kind of people that brings in. And it'll drop property values. You say, "How do you know that?" Because there ain't one person in this room wants to live by it. Which means nobody's gonna want to buy my house and live by it. And this government exists to protect and preserve our rights. And we have rights as citizens, so.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Wow, we gotta do it.
Gabe Borison, Fawcett Road.
Come up here so I can hear you, yeah, what was your name again?
Gabe Borison, Fawcett Road. I worked there since I spoke. Two years ago, we were in this exact same spot, doing the same thing. Like others have said, we expected changes to be made, they're not made. And you know why these people are trying to get in here is because they are taking advantage of a weakness. Other municipalities, townships, have already addressed this issue. Their choices are getting limited and one of them is here now. There's no enforcement, no accountability for what they're doing. Again, they're doing all this stuff illegally, coming back and asking for forgiveness. And guess what? They're just gonna do the same thing. I mean, you can put whatever you want on paper, you can send your lawyer here. Why are they not here? Listening to the people that are on, because they don't care. They're not from this area, that's why they target this, they don't want it in their front yard. You know, they're not here, they don't care, they're just throwing money at it so they can make money. And like other people said, the six people, that's not an income, that's not gonna cover what they put in there. And that's why, you know, there's people coming and going. We can't let our kids down at the bus stop, they won't. We drive to school every day even though there's a bus, three buses around, we have kids at three different schools. We have to group with the neighbors because the neighbors don't want the kids down there either. It's pretty pathetic that it's come to this, again, two years later and we're still fighting this. And there was plenty of time for this to be addressed and it wasn't, so, thank you.
Last opportunity? Alright, I'm gonna close.
One more.
One more? Okay, come on up and see you there.
Right, cars. How about I buy the property next to you, Garrett? And I build a greenhouse? And I sell my organic vegetables to the eastern market? How are you gonna stop that? You passed this. How about you, Steve? I buy property next to you. I build a greenhouse, I grow cannabis. How are you gonna stop that? Once you approve this. You too, Kirk. Rich? I mean, come on, guys. It's a commercial business, put it in commercial zoning.
Alright, this is the last call. Alright, we're gonna close the call to the public. And I'm gonna make a motion to pause our normal meeting and...
Move out of the regular meeting.
Move out of the regular meeting into the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, so we are now in the public hearing. I'm gonna read the public hearing. A request is made by Carmen McGinn for a proposed MMMA caregiver operation special land use permit at the property located at 9165 Fawcett Road, Fenton, Michigan, parcel ID 470429300029. The property is zoned RE rural estates. Reference the Township Zoning Ordinance Number 36, Section 21.55 and Articles 22 and 23. Okay, now we're gonna...
Did we, did we put this in? We didn't put that in here, so I think we might have to go approve the agenda. Did we, did we put the public hearing in this agenda?
Well, it was like...
Because it was better. Okay, well, usually there's a new business and there's a public hearing about it.
Yeah, well, this is what we got. Well, let's, we're gonna start going through the review of the application. Now, when we did get this, and this would be a good time for the gentleman to come up here now. We did get our planner's comments and there was a long list of things that he wanted addressed or that we needed to have addressed.
Right, I saw those.
And then I guess your person has made most of those changes. Let me ask you a question though, before we get into that. Are you guys, are they already growing stuff out there?
Did he introduce himself?
No, my name's Attorney Thomas Levine. The visit by the police officer was by invitation. They came to...
But my question is, were they...
And they inspected it and there was no, no, there's no plants.
There were no plants?
No.
Okay, I just, I've heard that, I just wanted to have your comment on that. Okay. I have the list of all the concerns. How do we go about...
Yeah, so, the town, the local, our work associates, can you guys hear me okay in the back? I don't know Mike, but I just put up a hand if I got a projector a little more. Township planning consultant. So, the, kind of the way this came about was an application came in, it was distributed to... was distributed to us for review. We had noted a few items that we wanted clarification on, the applicant in the back. Some items clarified, but that also generated a few other questions. So we took the updated information that came through, I would say, via an updated site plan and some email clarifications a lot of month ago, maybe five weeks, and used that to develop the review that we have tonight. After that review was published, the applicant reviewed it and sent some information late last week addressing or providing information in their attempt to address some of the items. We were, with kind of the short window, limited on our ability to review those updated clarification, but we did give it a general overview. The initial take on the information provided late last week was that a majority of the items were addressed, but there's still some more to review. So what I have is, is kind of, kind of an abbreviated run-through of each section of our initial review, in which I could kind of speak to the item that was presented, whether or not we feel it was addressed by the general information, and then that kind of wraps up at the end with our recommendations.
Go ahead.
So, we've got the application for 9165 Fawcett Road, a special land use for a medical marijuana caregiver operation, which under the special land use is permitted in the rural estate zoning. As I kind of stated, information kind of came in pieces, but based on all the information we have, I'll kind of go through each section of the review in order as it relates up there, and we'll kind of end up at, you know, recommendations for next steps. So as it relates to the project narrative section, there, uh, there's an existing single-family home on site, two sheds, and a quonza pot, which is where the cultivation operations are proposed. Mr. Schiffko, who is the tenant of the facility from Mr. McGinn, who's the landlord, he and his wife will live in the home, or his state or his wife will live in the home, and Mr. Schiffko will operate it as the caregiver operator. Per usual, the standard is that the PC would recommend to the township board on the site plan and special land use. The PC can waive any information required from the site plan, they don't need to be pertinent. And the planning commission has the ability to waive the impact assessment. We'll get to that. So the issues that we kind of noted, just going through the project narrative, was there was some dated notes about building heights that were no longer there. They did remove those as it related to a pre-existing barn. And then one of the things that we noticed in the information provided was the reference to operations, but the hours of operations were never given. That information was provided last week, and it was stated to be Monday through Friday, eight to six. And those hours of operations did not generate any concern. The next part speaks to the impact assessment. So impact assessments are required with site plans, however the PC can waive if they feel it's appropriate. There was information provided in the use statement by the applicant that we feel was, you know, an offering of information that would be involved in the impact assessment. Generally, between the information that was provided and the updated information as it related to plumbing code, cooperation with Livingston County Building Department, statement of no chemicals being stored or used on site, the sources of water, both sources and disposal of water, and that that information would be reviewed by the local county environmental health department, there being no floor drains in the cultivation facility as it relates to drainage of the soil, and all of the drains lead back to the house and existing septic. All of that information seems appropriate. It is outside of CWA's wheelhouse to say whether or not it is sufficient for making a determination on whether or not it meets the impact assessment requirements. So we'll discuss it when we get to recommendations, but essentially, our recommendation is that an impact assessment focusing on some of the potential environmental issues, and also the nuisance mitigation as it relates to odors be recommended. Again, the applicant did provide a lot of information about air filtration, scrubbing, air circulation. It's just not in my wheelhouse to say whether or not that stuff works. So we'll get to that when we get to impact assessment. The site description is about, it's a little over eight and a half acres. It is zoned rural estate. Future land use has it designated as residential and natural resource preservation. We did conduct a site visit on March twelfth. We know that the applicant has provided some information relating to improvements to the site that they plan to do. Our site visit, it did seem as though trash had been removed from the site, but the general condition of the structures and the, I guess, just the general landscape of the property, again, from a drive-by perspective, was that, you know, the structures, at the very least, need aesthetic issues addressed, and then anything else pending for Livingston County Building Department structurally. Landscaping, you know, again, the site is very wooded with mature landscapes and things of that nature, but even the landscape is relatively unkept. So we just wanted to note those items from our drive-by. Again, it seems as though trash has been picked up, but there are other items that need to be addressed as it relates to approving the property. And that's another part that we'll get to when we get to recommendations. And one thing I will note, again, the applicant did provide several pieces of information, both in the initial application and the, what they would do to the property, but one of the things that, and again, we can discuss this, one of the things that we noticed is that there was not a timeline associated with that. So being able to reasonably understand when that work would be done would probably be the better position to be in. As it relates to area width, height setbacks, the only item that we noted was that the quonza pot where the operations are going to be taking place, it didn't have the measurement between the structure and the wetland. And you have a fifty-foot set, fifty-foot setback requirement for accessory structures to wetlands. The updated information did provide that septic, however, it doesn't look as though it's from the nearest point of the two, of the two structures. I know the water, you know, it's not a defined, straight line, but what it's showing is fifty-eight. We would ask that that be reviewed to ensure that the nearest point of the two items is what's being measured, just to ensure that the quonza pot is within, not within the water setback. And this would be another item where, again, we can talk about the environmental impact assessment, is whether or not the proximity to the wetland is something that should be reviewed as part of the environmental portion of the impact statement or the impact assessment. Natural resources, again, the site's got a lot of mature woodlands on it. One of the things that we noted was the pond in the back, and what potter eyes, that the pond does traverse other properties. So there, there's a consideration there for if there's any activities on the site that would have an effect on that pond that would then traverse into other properties. So we did note that in our review. We did note that the, if there wasn't information provided as to whether or not it was regulated wetland of that pond, and that's information that would need to be provided by a professional engineer. And then we also noted, originally in the first round of information that was provided, storage containers were shown in the floor plans of the cultivation facility, but there was no information provided as to what would be stored in them. The updated information states that that's the storage of fresh water and used water to be disposed of at a later date. Again, that information doesn't provide, doesn't give us any certainty, but it may be something that'd be worthwhile in the review, in our assessment, as far as what are the storage methods and disposal methods for wastewater. Access and circulation, so the property has a dirt driveway up from the road and then a concrete driveway near the ground. There, it is a requirement, and it has been stated that no onsite transfer of the product is going to take place, so that wouldn't generate coming and going traffic. They did state that there may be the need for some potential additional help on site. I believe it was potentially up to two additional people, potentially twice a month. So two additional, up to, there'd be two additional people, up to twice a month. I believe the updated information said that they would tell anyone vehicles would not create a lot of parking issues. All this really stems from the fact that section twenty-five point oh-two-C of your zoning ordinance states that all parking is prohibited in any yard except clearly defined varieties. And what we just wanted to highlight there is that there's no parking in your yard. You know, whatever vehicles are on site need to be parked clearly defined driveways. Initial application kind of lacked in some of the parking information. What they said has an update last week addressed a lot of those, so we don't really have any major concerns with that, you know, at this point with that information. Essential services and utilities, we noted the property doesn't appear to be in a flood zone, which is typically what we take a look at when we look at this information. One of the things that we wanted, the initial plan did not provide, was information regarding existing proposed utilities. There were a lot of talk about septic fields, water, but we weren't sure whether or not the cultivation facility had its own system, or whether it would be tapped in the homes. They clarified it would be tapped in the homes, so then we asked for the pathway of these drain lines going back to the house to see if there wasn't any issue with that. They did update that information. The new site plan does have the existing utilities, proposed utilities, kind of where they're running to and from. Our initial review of it is that it looks sufficient. But again, that's another one where we, when we talk about our recommendations, is we would defer to have the engineer township, or the township engineer take a look at that, the site plan, to just see if there isn't any conflict with those utilities. And then again, the impact assessment could look into, you know, again, so the wastewater's being disposed of into the septic system, which is going back to the house. I'm, it's not my place to tell you whether or not septic systems are for wastewater generated by these facilities. So these were, those were our items of essential services and utilities. Landscaping and screening, you have limited landscaping requirements when it comes to single-family zoning districts. The applicant is proposing to, it looks as though to propose a lot, or keep a lot of the existing landscaping, and fill in some areas as a complement along the driveway and the quonza cultivation area as kind of a screening method. The only thing that we had noted is that there was some exterior mechanical equipment associated with the quonza pot. That material needs to be screened. They were showing it screened, they just weren't telling us what type of plant it was. And, you know, if it's not nitpicky, it's just, I provide a screen, mechanical equipment, can't, trees don't. So we just wanted them to provide that information. It looks as though they did, and provided that information in the update we received last week. So no major landscaping concerns. Exterior lighting, there's a statement that no lighting, no exterior lighting is going to be added to any of the structures. And the cultivation operation that quonza pot doesn't have any windows. So the light used to grow the plants doesn't necessarily generate any excess light pollution through windows. Sidewalk, the application had said that no sidewalk would be used, alluding to the fact that there's a dirt use on site, which is a requirement. And we take a look at sidewalks, standards anyways. So with all that, that, those are kind of the items as it relates to your standard site plan review. Good, good point to take us, break, and see if you guys have any questions as it relates to that.
I got another, off the topic, what was the generator out there for?
Construction.
But it was running, running, it sounds like it was running at night.
Yeah, they put new windows in and new doors.
Why would they run the, it doesn't, that doesn't make sense. It's not logical. They run the generator at night if they're not doing work.
Why was the building department contacted to assist in shutting down a building generator?
I'm not saying it wasn't there. I mean, what, it shut down?
I'm just saying, for someone who's built many things, I'm asking for residential area, why was the building department called to help shut down a residential generator?
I don't know. I have no idea. I don't know what your point is.
My point, you don't know my point? I think everyone here knows my point, right? My point is really clear. You, a building, a building contractor has a very small generator, one that doesn't need to have external, an external entity help shut it down and remove it. So explain to me, again...
Well, they came and did an inspection. There were no plants there, so I don't know what the deal is. There, there can be twelve plants. Every adult can possess twelve plants at their residence right now in Michigan.
For personal use.
But, but they are not...
Yeah, for personal use, I get that.
Well, this is not a commercial operation. These are patients and caregivers. So it's just for people who choose to medicate themselves with this alternative to western medicine, God forbid. It's not a commercial operation.
What defines a commercial operation versus one that's not?
For profit, I would imagine. There's a whole set of laws for commercial cultivation of cannabis. This is not that.
So, so here's the thing. I can create myself a nonprofit and still be commercial, right? We, we know this, right? Salvation Army, Goodwill, those are nonprofits, and yet they're commercial. So again, what makes this commercial versus not? Like where, where is the defining line of something that is commercial and something that is not? And the reason I'm asking is because we need to know whether or not this is a commercial operation, and then put it in the commercial.
Right, the commercial...
This is my main, my main question with the whole thing.
Okay, the, the commercial licenses are very clear. They're granted by the state. Only in townships that have opted in, they can grow two thousand plants. They can sell on the wholesale market to processors and retailers. That's commercial.
So two thousand plants, two thousand plants is the limit? So if you're, if you're one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, you're not commercial, right? I, I just want to, I'm trying to clarify that.
No, the commercial is where you sell on wholesale, and you sell to, you know, adults either on the adult side, or to patients on the medical side.
Right, but...
This is a caregiver and patient operation.
Volume-wise, what defines...
Right, twelve plants per patient.
So twelve plants, we have seventy-two, seventy-two spots according to this.
Right, right. That's twelve plants per patient.
So, so again, is, what, what, I mean, they're obviously selling. If they're selling, obviously, it's commercial. It's clearly not residential. I mean, that's the way that I see it.
No, it's not obviously they're selling.
So that's why I want to find out. Where is the designated line between something that is commercial and something that is residential? Like I'm...
Probably selling it to the, more of an open market than just your patients. This is a caregiver-patient relationship.
There's, there's definitions for everything. And I'm asking you what this definition, sorry, guys, I don't need to be taking all the time. Like, I just, I need to know this definition.
Well, the state law is very clear. The, the commercial licenses are, you know, for Class A, B, and C licenses, and they sell it on the wholesale market to dispensaries that dispense it to twenty-one and over, or to patients. The medical also has a commercial law, the Medical Facilities Licensing Act, and those are commercial licenses. But this, this is not. This is a patient and caregiver relationship.
It's just if you go and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, right? So if you just get the license, the commercial license, then you're commercial. But if you don't get that commercial license, then you're residential, right? Is that, that kind of what I'm understanding?
Well, they're different kinds of licenses. The caregiver license versus a commercial grow license. It's distinct under the law.
If you're looking for a definition, a difference between commercial and non-commercial, merely looking at the state laws as to what would be allowed, isn't going to give you that answer. It's just a line that the state has drawn. It says if you're going to use it for this purpose, you have to have this type of license for this purpose, this type of license. And so simply getting a commercial license doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have a commercial operation. But you can.
Right.
Okay, so what you have to do is find out from the applicant, their position as to why this isn't a commercial operation. And it's not merely because a certain license is required for a certain type of operation, and that, because I think the question you're asking is more generic...
Yes.
...as opposed to the specifics of the statute.
Right.
One problem I have with this, and this is something that Mateo touched on, is with the odor situation with this, and I've been around some of these, in areas where they say, "Oh, we're going to have these scrubbers in there." And when those, I'm not really sure, but I think when the flowers are blooming or something, it way overpowers those scrubbers. And you guys are going to tell us, "Oh, these will work." But then if, when it doesn't, then, you know, the neighbors are going to be stuck dealing with this problem.
Well, formerly, there was an exhaust fan at this place. That's been closed. This is a sealed building with three carbon fiber filters that really do address the odor. And there's no windows and no...
Yeah, well, it's, it's going to be, but...
No, but you just said that they closed that and...
Well, they clo, they, it's part of what they're working on, right? No, it's they're not growing there, right?
Right, right. But it's a closed building, so they got rid of the exhaust fan at the top, and then there would be these three filters as well, one in each of the rooms.
So none of this HVAC stuff, none of this is in the building at the moment?
Correct.
And Steve, it's like I said, when we get the impact assessment, when we have found our kind of recommendations, again, the impact, they provided a lot of information regarding these systems and these filters. It's probably worthwhile having someone who understands it to say, yes, we, we found that these are, that these are good systems, and they require this kind of maintenance and this kind of turnover.
When you visited the property, did you have the police escort?
No, I just, my drive, my visit was strictly from the road, by the driveway.
Okay, there was some police escort, somebody from the township, I don't know. But the, none of the water will get into the pond. There's no floor drains. And the water actually is caught in these drip trays that the pots are placed upon, and it's recycled. And they have a reverse osmosis system plan to, to deal with that. So there's no impact on the, on the pond at all. The only part that's going back to the septic is the hand sink from that facility. The rest will be used to water the plants. The, so there'll be no exterior lights like there had been. The prior owner had bright lights out there. Those have been removed. There's security there as well. The-
What they, what that, we still have the special land use standards to review, and then the, the specific regulations as it relates to the methyl marijuana caregiver operations. I, I just wanted to kind of take a pause of the site plan stuff to see if there are questions. Steve, I'll follow your lead on it. You want me to get through the next few and-
Let's go through the special land use items. Because, let me ask our attorney, because of the special land use, what are our options to deny this?
Your choices are to approve, deny, or to table. If you feel as though you don't have sufficient information because of requested information that hasn't been brought forward, you can table this matter. If you feel as though based on the information that you have, the special land use permit should not be granted, you can do that. If you believe that they have satisfied all the requirements under the ordinance, then you can grant, uh, grant or approve the special land use permit. So approve, deny, table.
Approval, approval with conditions as well?
Absolutely. There's conditions that are, yes. But those conditions ultimately have to be met.
Correct, right, yeah.
And I believe we have addressed each and every one of your issues in the most recent supplemental, as you mentioned.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. Like I said, I got two, two more sections that's-
Our issue is the, you know, we've been dealing with Livingston County, and they've been, you know, helpful, but they won't do any inspections until and unless the special land use permit is granted.
Why this property?
Because this couple wants to live there and-
They don't live there, do they?
They're working on the house. They just put in new windows and new doors.
Could there be property-
And they've been working on it.
Could there be property in the commercial zone where, that's right down the road from them, minutes away? You know, would, would something like that be like more feasible?
I'm just trying to figure out why this, this specific spot, why turn this unit on the property into this type of building? I, I don't know this stuff like the back of my hand, but I do know quite a bit. This isn't just like go to Home Depot and grab some supplies and start growing stuff. This is electrical, you got to know your stuff. And you got to have the right people in there. HVAC, all this venting, this is not like, again, Home Depot run, go grab some stuff. These guys got to know what they're doing. But why this place, this, and this is the second one? No, second?
Yeah, second.
Second guy?
Second one.
So what, like, what do we got going on here? Why, why is this, why is this property so, yeah, like what's, I mean, I can go build that thing on a vacant piece of land near nobody, and you can do whatever you want, but why there? Like, the neighbor has said, like-
They want to, they want to live there and, and have it right out back.
But they're not living there currently.
Because the house isn't finished.
When's it going to be finished?
Well-
I'm also disappointed that the applicant didn't show up, and hear, hear the response from the neighbors. I, I think, I think that is, that, that bothers me.
I, I think that's, I mean-
Well, you know, patients, you know, it's protected by HIPAA. You're not supposed to even reveal what, who the patients are. It's none of anybody's business who a patient is. And this caregiver is a patient, and-
Then he can grow 12 for himself, and you don't need to go through this.
What the law provides is that we can, you know, you can ask for safety inspections and, and that sort of thing, but caregivers are not subject to penalty. They're immune from being denied any right or privilege under the law.
This doesn't seem like a good use. I, I'm not comfortable with this at all in, in a residential area.
Yeah, I have a question. Is the, will this be the caregiver's principal residence?
Yes, once, once it's done.
Not the caregivers, the employees, you said.
The caregiver. The caregiver and his wife.
The applicant is, is a patient as well as the caregiver operator.
Who, the ca, this guy?
Yeah, Shifko.
Mr. Shifko.
That's the C.
Cameron, Cameron McGinn, the owner of the property, is leasing it to Mr. Shifko and his wife. Mr. Shifko is the, is a registered patient and the caregiver operator, correct?
Yes. The owner, the owner is his wife.
Cameron, Cameron McGinn, was it?
That's his wife.
Oh, that's his wife, okay.
As, as you could see on the site plan, ArbeVida plants are being put in all along in between the driveway that they have an easement on and the, and the, the grow facility. So they'll take great care that, in, in terms of the smell, and they've sealed the, the exhaust fan, and they've identified these filters that are very effective. They have their own transformer on the property now, and they've run some wiring, so there's electricity.
Steve, I'm, I'm asking, if I ask you off, why don't we, when we go through special land use, we'll go through additional regulations that you guys can develop, and you can, whatever questions they have to listen to, then we can go through them.
Okay.
So when it relates to special land use standards, when we look at the current master plan, the future land use designation, this includes the low density residential of which this is currently permitted in the residential district's zoning. It's a special land use in rural states, so it meets that requirement. From the neighborhood perspective, from the, from the neighborhood criteria of assessing, the applicant's provided information stating that there is intent and improvements stated to retain the house's, you know, single family or residential appearance and seemingly, you know, day-to-day operations. So for law review, there was nothing that indicated that the neighborhood element of the special land use review, that it wouldn't meet that criteria. We also noted that we would defer to, again, the, the information provided by the impact assessment that was contrary to that, or anything in an engineering review that was contrary to that. But based on the information provided in the statements by the applicant, it does meet the, kind of the neighborhood conducive-ness requirement from the special land use. From environment, from the environmental requirements, again, the environmental measures that they're putting into place seem appropriate. CWA is, is not the wheelhouse to say whether or not they do work. We've talked about the nuisance mitigation. We've talked about wastewater, you know, the pond, things of that nature. Information we have indicates that they meet that criteria, but we would also defer to additional studies to determine that. Public services, based on the information we have, we do not have any reason to believe that it would be a higher tax on public services at the facility, based on the information provided. Traffic, we've talked about, we don't have any traffic concerns. Additional developments, based on the information provided in the special land use section, where, you know, as it relates to additional development in and around the area, we don't cite any information that doesn't, that conflicts with that requirement. And then the health, safety, and welfare, this goes back to, again, we don't find anything cited that threatens health, safety, and welfare, but we do defer to additional studies-
Because you don't live in-
That could, that could generate any-
In regards to the health and safety issue, what's the proximity to this property and the bus stop for kids?
That information I do not have.
So that would be one thing we would be curious about. I think that's a probably difficult one to determine.
So the, we've complied with the ordinance, I believe, and answered the various questions, and we've been conferring with county building department as well. And, you know, we'll do whatever it takes to, to be sure that it complies with the ordinance.
Steve, sorry, do you have, do you have specific ordinance for MNCOs? I can go through that real quick, and then that'll be, that'll be-
Let's do that. And then we'll go to, and then we're going to do that, and then we're going to go to call to the public within the public hearing.
Okay, and then, like I said, after that, I can give you-
Sounds good, okay.
So as it relates to the specific agreements that you have for methyl marijuana caregiver operations, we did want to know that the ordinance does allow for the township to inspect during business hours, which was one of the reasons why we wanted that information in the application. Site control, they've provided at least that shows that the applicant does have site control of the, of the property. Qualified patients, again, we wanted clarification that the registered caregiver is also a patient. And that, that speaks to who could be, in what room, at what time, with what other people. But once that was clarified, we found that it met the standard. No parents of a caregiver operation, again, via the signage, the, the intent to retain the residential feel of the property. Delivery, all of the product is to be delivered to the patients. There's to be no onsite transfer. It's not allowed. They've stated that that would not take place. No paraphernalia sales on the site. They've stated that that will not take place. Signage, they've stated no signage that will be indicating a caregiver facility. Consumption on site, again, this is why we wanted clarification, if either of the people were registered patients, because if you're registered patients onsite, you can consume, but nobody else can consume. Growing marijuana indoors, so there's a, you have a rules for growing it outdoors and indoors. They're growing indoors. There's no windows in the facility, so the light, the lighting issue is not, not a problem. And that we just wanted to, you know, you have a requirement that you have to meet the county and, the county and township safety requirements and codes, which they've put in the statement that they will comply with those requirements. That's, there's my review. I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Would you mind moving over to one of these seats so we can open up the table for our public comments? Thank you for doing that. All right, yeah, let's, uh, be, let's be courteous to our applicant. We're going to still have the three-minute rule.
Thank you. My, my main concerns are for the neighbors. Have you-
You have to, for a public hearing, you have to state your name.
Chris, thank you. My biggest concern is for our neigh, is for the neighbors of this facility. Grow House has taken enormous amount of energy to run. Where will the exhaust for the air go, even if it's filtered? And what kind of noise does that make? Are there noise regulations that have to be adhered to as part of these regulations? You know, so, because obviously, if they've taken away the commercial generator, the operations you mentioned are only from eight to six, Monday through Friday. But you don't just stop growing after six o'clock. There's still mechanical things that have to take place to heat in the winter, to, to condition the air during the summer. It's not an enclosed capsule. There still has to be venting for heat systems unless it's totally electrical and things of that nature. So you should consider these kinds of things from a building perspective. You also have to consider, and it's good to hear, that there will be no delivery of product on the site. There's no pickup or things of that nature. But why does the, why was it stated earlier that the application says that the owner doesn't live on site, but the tenant does? And now it's been revealed that the owner is the wife of the tenant. And so I, I'm confused about this, what it seems to be a deception. I, it's, to me, just as an average person, seems like a deception. And if we're only talking about the aesthetics of the house, why aren't we talking about bringing the house up to code as far as the building code? Like any resident moving in to a dilapidated building should have the, the county out there. We should insist that the entire house in the septic field. And if the discharge is just being recycled, how do you prove that? How do you prove that it's not going in there? So we need to establish very, very tight regulations. But guess what? You guys have already told us as a township, you don't regulate. The residents have to regulate. That's what you've made it clear in the past to the residents. How are you going to address that issue about requiring the residents to go and see what's going on instead of you? What will you build in so that the township and the county can regulate this facility? And commercial, the question you didn't ask is if you're selling to somebody, because he said if it's commercial, you're selling to medical patients. That's what this is. It's a sale of a product to a patient. It doesn't matter whether they're a caregiver or they need it for a particular reason. It's still a sale to a particular person that is defining it as a commercial entity. It's a sale. There's a sale transaction going on.
Thank you for your comments.
On maybe the back end of Chris's comments, I just totally randomly looked up the definition of caregiver in, under the state of Michigan, dot gov, blah, blah. And I never realized it, but it looks like there's a, a host of regulatory things and, and applications and, you know, certifications and 75 hours of training and all this stuff specifically for a caregiver to be able to give care to other people. And I don't think it, I don't think it says anything in here about whether it's hospice care or growing marijuana for somebody, et cetera, et cetera. But potentially, and I don't know, because I, again, I just briefly looked at it, it seems like there may be tax credits that caregivers can apply for through the state of Michigan to actually get tax credit from the state if they're growing marijuana for, as a caregiver and supplying it to whoever they want. So it seems like it would also be interesting to, again, I know through HIPAA, you can't specifically name names, but it would be interesting to find out the, the folks that are going to be receiving care from these caregivers, what, what are their ailments? And I'm, respectfully, I'm not, do they have cancer? Do they just wake up with a headache in the morning? Like, what are their, what are their ailments? And I, again, I don't know legally if you can even ask that, but just curious.
Daisy Borison?
I'm just going to clear some stuff up.
So they put new windows in two weeks ago-
So they put new windows in two weeks ago. October 31st is when I took a picture of the generator running. That, like I said, it's a commercial generator on a double action trailer. I looked up the price, they're like $70,000. This is not something that normal builder would have. So, since nothing has been done to the house, you know, from October to now, like, why, why was this generator here, you know, like I said, running? And then not only that, you guys knew about this, because the township, I called and made complaints, and the township sent letters to the owners telling them to stop the noise. So you guys already knew about this. And when I called the township, I talked to Carrie, and she told me they have a full grow operation going on again, and they said they don't care about anything about the permits, they're just going to pay the fines. So you guys knew in October that this was going on, because that's what I was told when I called, and that's why I had to go to the police, and I had to go to more people, because as a township, you guys said they're going to pay the fines, there's nothing we can do about it. So, I mean, I, I don't know why you guys are, this is surprising to you, because there were certified letters from what I was told, and it was weeks and weeks that this generator was running. It was not just like two days, 24 hours a day. So, you know, there's, there's all that on there. And during this time, no one was living at the residence. So we're talking about they're growing marijuana, the police said so, because they got shut down, the generator was taken away, and no one was living at the residence. I mean, they're doing all these things illegally, what makes you think that you're giving them this permit, and all of a sudden they're just going to cross every T and not every I? So not only that, in their applications, they're talking about the residents, and they want to, you know, take care that this isn't going to do anything, but when they pulled this generator up in the driveway and ran it for weeks and weeks, they didn't care about anybody living around them, because it sounded like a bulldozer was operating 24 hours a day. It was, I can't believe it. The bus stop, my kids are right there, their property is right at the bus stop, and right at the line. And like my husband said, we take our kids to school, and I drive the neighbor's kids to school, because nobody wants to stand down there and be down there when all the riffraff is going on, and we don't know who it is that's coming and going and doing this and that. The previous owners put $127,000 into that barn, and that's why, I don't know, we were told that when they sold it, because they didn't get the permits, that they were going to have to, like, rip some apart, because the building inspector didn't know, like, if anything was done properly. But obviously, nothing was, because it just started blowing automatically. And then the water, I'm running out of time, but the waterways, like, their septic tank, no one's lived in that house in years and years and years, and the septic hasn't been used in 30, 40 years, I don't even know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Scott Dietrich, before you start my time, what we didn't hear from, from the, from you guys, is if we didn't hear from Ross, we usually hear from Ross. And I, you guys didn't question Ross on anything. Do you want to start my time? If he's going to answer it, I'd like my time to stop while he's answering it. Ross, you know what's going on, and I seen you shaking your head over there, and I think you're.
Scott, you got to.
Well, you're our zoning administrator, he's part of you guys, he's our zoning administrator, he can answer some questions that was put out here. And I'd like to know, it's not, we're not stupid, the generator is growing or growing. Was there a police report? Was there, was there growing?
We contacted law enforcement, the operation was shut down.
It was shut down, but were they growing?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Okay. So this attorney lied to us.
Yeah.
Listen, sir, sit down, you sit, you have your time. Sit down. Tell him to sit down.
Scott?
Tell him to sit down.
Scott, address, address us.
He's interrupting me. He perjured himself in front of you, our attorney, and the rest of my neighbors, by saying that they were invited there, law enforcement. And he lied. I'm sure if you were a judge, you didn't monitor. Phil.
Um, you can smell those things when you drive by them. If they live there, if they're at, first of all, if they're the owners, they should be applying if it's the owner only. They're going to have barbecues and parties. So are they going to call the police when they have a barbecue? Because there's more than how many people on it? Because they're living there, right? Tell me they're going to lay out so many people. You're never going to have parties, they're not going to have people over for Christmas? They're not living there. Find out where their home status is, where they filed for their home state taxes. As far as I'm concerned, if they did all this stuff without any approval by anybody, pulled in there and plugged, plugged it in and went, they're not covered by state. And I said this earlier, bring the feds in, prosecute, ask all them, should they be prosecuted under federal law? They have no protection because they didn't do it the correct way. And everyone on this stinks. When you answered my question, thanks for being honest. Got one man there, I look up to him, I come and talk to him, and I talk, and he will give you, he won't lie to nobody. So I'll tell you right now, we have a problem in this township.
CJ Callahan, 9225 Fawcett Road. These drones, when they're out there doing whatever you're doing there, where did it go to the bathroom at? There's no septic out there, and it's probably 200 feet to the house septic, which is older than I am. You know, I knew the people right up until 75 that lived there. So it, it, it needs work all the way around, but you still have an issue of where the people are going to go to the bathroom, you know? I don't expect they'll come out and do their thing in front of a bunch of young kids waiting for the, the bus. The other thing is, I want a drug-free zone, okay? From Fawcett Road all the way to Lake Shannon, and if Lake Shannon's interested enough, they'll get involved, and we'll take it right on down through there. But you cannot have that crap near a school. Why would you want it next to three children boarding every morning? Now I want some support on that, okay? And I'm going to ask again later, not tonight, if you guys support me on it. You know, I'll pay for the signs, but we need it. I don't want him, you know, he can't even give you decent answers, you know? And I'll be damned if I pay him 500 bucks an hour for that.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Stacy over on Sheridan Park. 2018, we had a grow operation right down our street, there were 30-plus cars every day up and down our road. I didn't want my kids walking to the bus stop. I don't blame them for not wanting their kids to walk to the bus stop. It's absolutely ridiculous. The traffic that comes along with a place like that is insane. You can't tell me that it's not, because there's people coming in and out, in and out. Doesn't matter whether they're a patient or whatever, they're still buying it. Second thing is, why do they put 170-whatever thousand dollars into a barn if they want to eventually live into the house? You'd think you'd want to put the money into the house before you put it into the barn to do your grow operation.
Dina, Smolny shop shores, running late. Let's assume.
They do have a septic field.
If I'm building a house and I want a septic field, I got to tell you how many people, how much water, how many bathrooms. So now you're telling me they're going to take all this extra water, it's not going to be drained out anywhere else, it's going to go in their septic field. Is their septic field sized for it? Is their field sized for it? Because guess what? All that water that goes to the field, that's classified gray water, that's going right out to the field, that's leached into their ground, that's going into our groundwater. If that field's not sized for what they're asking to do, it's irrelevant. They can't do it. So now where are they going to put the water? They're going to have to do something with it, and I guarantee it's not just water now, because I guarantee if they're growing, it's fertilizers. I don't want those fertilizers going into Lake Shannon, the pond, my lake, because then we got a weed problem. And then it's another whole issue we got to deal with. We've had enough problems right now with groundwater and runoff. We don't need somebody adding to them for the simple reason because they want to grow some pot for some people that need it. Tell them go to commercial, tell them put the proper facilities in place, and do it there, not in our community.
Thank you.
Jim Combs, 6295.
I said a few minutes ago, we all know what kind of people this brings, Greg. So my man over here proved my point. You guys asked him three questions that I remember. First one, why were the police out there? They got invited. Right. We all believe that.
Right.
Address the board. She was there. Second one, the generator, great question, replacing windows. She knows it's not true. Right? Third one, why do they want to live, or, I'm sorry, why this property? Because they want to live in the house, they want to live there. Then why aren't they put the money in the frickin' house? If they want to live there so bad, they're not living in the barn. So my point is, the dude lied to you three times. That's the kind of people. And all, all this, he comes with this nice little prepared thing, oh, we, we've addressed all these things. Well, once somebody lies to me once, I don't believe them again. So all that crap that's on there that he says he's going to do, as soon as they get their permit, they're going to do it. They're going to keep their word, because he can't even tell the truth with three questions in a row. That's the kind of people we bring, and that's my point. We all watched it, we all watched him lie, and he was trying to backtalk his way out of it, but we were all here. So he's full of crap, and they aren't going to do this stuff. Soon as backs are turned, they do whatever they want. And we all know that. I'm just pointing out.
Randy Gears again. I just want to reiterate about the water. I don't know if you guys have ever used a reverse osmosis system, you might have one in your house. Are you telling me that this is going to filter all these wa, all the water for all these plants and be recycled for the next batch of plants? With your nutrient levels being all over the board, they're not going to drop that stuff somewhere? They're very, very particular about how the chemicals react to the plants, to the groundwater. You get a fish kill out of Lake Shannon, you're going to have a shitstorm. If those, those things are going to leach into the ground, root balls are going to go out and back by the, by the woods, because that's where they do with them, they don't, there's no, no facility that takes them and disposes of them properly within encapsulated little boxes. So all that, all that stuff's going to leach right on the ground. Shit rolls downhill, Parsville Pond, Lake Shannon. You get a good fish kill out there, you're going to have a bunch of people stomping up in here. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
How you doing, Brett? You know, first of all, this is kind of a joke, guys. He's applying for a commercial license in a residential, strike one. Okay? He comes up here and he lies about the generator. I mean, come on. Then they got caught growing weed. They're not doing it right. You guys should deny this tonight. As far as the reverse osmosis, for every gallon that goes through the membrane, you wash five gallons out. So where's that water going? Shit rolls downhill, boys, don't be at the bottom of the hill.
Janette Tyron Township. I just had some random notes here, and I want to thank the planning commission, those that asked the right questions tonight. But let's not forget, you guys didn't do the right thing in getting this ordinance for the last time that this happened, didn't pick up, or dropped that ball. We should have an ordinance on the books right now, like other townships, that say it's only going in a commercial area. And you guys talked about it, I know you weren't, Steve, you weren't the chairman at the time, but it was talked about, and you can ask residents that were here for that, they were under the assumption that that was going to be done. Mateo, refer, referred to their new site plan and your published plan. We don't know about any published plan until yesterday. So when somebody asks, hey, we can't, you know, what is this thing, you've got a couple things on the agenda? We never got to see it until yesterday. That's not right. And I also have to say too, you know, and talk about the township, you know, inspecting things, when has the township ever inspected anything? I mean, I've made a complaint before, and I've been told, well, your complaint has to go to them three times in the mail, and then we get the lawyer to contact them, and blah, 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 has to be signed, it can't be anonymous, all of this stuff. And then, then we're told at a meeting that we as residents are the ones that have to watch this stuff, that you guys don't police it, we have to watch it. So we have to think about all of those things. Also, there was a comment made that from the drip cans, that it just gets recycled, the water? Are you telling me that that water never gets changed, it just gets recycled, 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 recycled? I think they're going to just dump it down the sink. Why wouldn't they? So, let's see, again, he was walking, I'm glad to see that you're all in uproar about that, that you all, those of you that were on the commission, when this came up last time, that was brought up, the bus stop, the kids at the bus stop. But now you're all outraged at it, I'm glad, but it's, it should, it should have been looked after. I am, I'm upset that this public hearing was not on the township calendar, you only have meeting on there, nothing on the homepage. And again, the majority of people didn't hear about it if they're subscribed to the township's updates. And I just think it's, it's horrible how only the bare minimum is being done to let people know. You could easily have had it on the front page of your webpage, public hearing. In the calendar, it should say that there's a public hearing. And I'd like to know which elected or appointed officials are meeting in secret to discuss this application. Why didn't we know about it? Somebody discussed this, somebody knew about it, and why do you guys know about these reports? Why?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Erica. Mateo, I don't know you, I get a very strong feeling you don't live in this township, which is fine, it's just every once in a while on your list, okay? Every once in a while on Mateo's list, I would like to see that he is actually considering what the people are here saying. And also, I don't know what the heck you can tell from the road. I'm just not sure. And if it was my kids, I would be concerned too. I don't live near there, it still concerns me, because it could come my way too. So I think you guys should really consider this, and consider not tabling it and denying it, because I think you already know what the right thing to do is, I think you just need to be brave about it and get it done. My two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my name's Charlie McHale, I guess excuse me for the accent, but, so I did work for the city of Badly Creek for a year and a half. And, you know, we have a big operation for, you know, recreation marijuana, and I can tell you the crime rate did not really go down. The crime rate went up. So I do live close to these individuals, and it bothers me just to see that you guys are just sitting there, all of you, from these tax payers' money, and you can't even say no to somebody that's lying here, right? Somebody doesn't live in the property, he doesn't, he's just in it for the money, you know? And I can tell you the crime rate will go higher off. And this guy, he doesn't have best interest here. So I can tell you guys, you need to vote this no tonight, because if you don't trust me, it's going to create a bigger storm for you guys, and trust me, the history is going to really remember every one of you here. And this guy just, you know, lying. I worked for the city, I worked for governments for years, and I can tell you, when it moves to residential area, if your kid's at school and you live next to these guys, trust me, you will say no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, one more.
All right, one more. Okay.
Commercial business, commercial business is an activity conducted by companies.
You got every, you got every name again.
Greg Carnes. Commercial business is an activity conducted by companies to provide goods or services for sale.
Address, address. Planning commission.
Yeah, for sale. Goods or services for sale. Commercial business. Commercial business belongs in commercial.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public comment section, and we're going to move into the planning commission and planner comments on this, on this particular issue. You can come back up there, if we have any questions for you to ask. I have to admit though, the, the lack of truthfulness is very concerning.
Well, this is the deal, I did not know that they were growing six months ago. When I was hired, they're not growing now, so I was informed they're not growing now. Now I'm informed here that they were initially growing, they had caregiver cards, they didn't know, that this is the only township in the state. They didn't know that this is the only township in the state that I know of that has a special land use permit for a caregiver. In most places, a caregiver gets certification from the state and they can do it at their home. There's no such thing as a conditional use permit in any other township. I'm not aware of any.
That's the way it is here.
Um, and, and they willingly shut it down as soon as they found out
They shut it down because they got caught.
that there was a need of a special land use permit. So there's no houses really that close. It's over eight and a half acre parcel.
Guys.
And if you don't want them, then don't put an ordinance on the books allowing for them. We've jumped through every hoop. And the inspections that will answer any remaining questions can't be done unless the permit is granted. So we would ask for it to be granted with conditions so that the proper inspections can occur.
Can I make a little clarification about just procedural thing?
Yes.
So just so everyone's clear, this is, this, if they take action on this item tonight, it is not a direct approval denial or anything like that. It needs to go to the township board as well. They are a recommendation.
We recommend to the board, yep.
So any action taken tonight is not the fire department.
Okay.
Do they recommend denial?
No, they're only going to go to the board if they approve it under conditions.
It would be a recommendation for approval or approval.
Yeah, but if they deny it, then we're not.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation, Scott.
So it still needs to go to the board.
That's right.
Do we have any other questions?
Any further discussion?
I just have some questions on your, the overview of the inside of the building. There's squares, are those plant tables? There's 60 of them.
Seventy-two.
Uh, drip trays. I understand that there's drip trays and then there's PVC piping that captures all that water and recycles it to reuse it to water the plants.
I'm going to make a motion that we deny it just because it's not compatible with residential opinions.
Please, so they can hear in the back.
I said, I'm going to make a motion to deny this based on. Right, so deny this. Hold on.
Motion to recommend.
Recommend to the board a denial. And that's based on, you know, public opinion. And it's just not compatible with it.
Did you support, Garrett?
I do.
Okay, we have motion and support to deny the application. All in favor of the denial? Aye?
Aye.
I'm going to make a, I'm going to request that we make a slight adjustment to the agenda and move the solar scale up to the first item of old business so that we can have our person get back to Grand Rapids. What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got to get out of the.
Okay. Yeah, we got to close the vote. And we, or close the public.
Karen, can you make that for me?
Move, we go out of the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then go back into the regular meeting.
Support. All in favor of close the public hearing, go back into the regular meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're back in the regular meeting now. Back to my comment. We're going to move, if that's, if that works, move solar up.
The motion to amend the agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda, to move solar to number one and move master plan to number two.
Support.
Motion to support, all in favor?
Steve, I, just a real quick, would it, since we're doing this, would it make sense to, will the solar and wind and battery kind of overlap?
Guys, can you talk in the microphone?
Same thing.
I'm just wondering if it makes sense to move the.
Oh, both of them?
Master plan behind both of those items.
That amendment to the amendment is a good amendment. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to do that. Okay. Yeah, it's already closed, so we're back into it. Okay, let's go and start with the solar.
Sure. Uh, so where we are with solar is, for the last meeting, there were a few more tweaks or clarity that you guys wanted as it related to, um, the surety language. We did insert some ownership transfer, ownership language, and what kind of liabilities may or may not be transferred or still retained with the prior owner. Um, and then clarification from the perspective of the S language and about the township and the applicant having to mutually agree on the consultant selected for certain studies. So we went ahead and drafted, CWA, Carlisle Wartman Associates drafted those tweaks. Uh, we sent them to Laura. And with that, you know, again, there's plenty of time for conversation as it relates to those items and whether or not they meet the planning commission's intent of the language. Um, but if they do, then that language is pretty much nearing completion for the, for the solar portion of the ordinance. Um, I know we'll talk about battery and wind, but just kind of a synopsis of where we are is, solar language is at, call it 90% completion. Um, there's a conversation to be had about, um, battery and wind needing to be of a certain size to be, you know, permitted within the township, uh, which Laura can speak to. And then speak to whether or not the battery, like where does the battery and wind go? Is it, can they be, can they be placed in the same overlay? So the solar overlay becomes a renewable energy overlay, not just solar. So that's just, those are just bullet points of kind of where we are, what we have left to do. Um, as it, you got a question?
Well, I have a comment on the battery ordinance when we got the letters from the fire department.
Right.
They want to be involved with the writing of the ordinance because they're very concerned about it. Um, just, he said, here's a quote from the fire chief. These systems are extremely dangerous and most fire departments are not prepared to handle them as a typical fire. I mean, this is, that's really.
No, no, no. I, I saw it. I, I would wholeheartedly.
And they want to be involved with the writing of it.
And I would have them at the table, no doubt. Um, that was in reference to battery?
Battery.
Let's hit the solar stuff.
I know, I just wanted.
No, no, you're fine. I just want to.
We'll get confused for it. All right.
So for the solar language, uh, the first piece of editing that was inserted as the, the decommissioning, there was a question about, so who can decide what's decommissioned? So the language that we had proposed was a site shall not be decommissioned until the township has provided written acceptance of the sites, the state, of the sites, state to the owner. Again, I know Laura had seen this. I have to defer her thoughts on that language.
Yep, we have reviewed all the changes and did not have any concerns.
Okay. So as far as the township retaining the right to be, to have the authority to say, yes, this is decommissioned or no, it's not, that's now one of the ordinance for solar. Any questions?
No, just only question on would it make sense to add or operating business entity? Because they could be different than the owner in the case of solar, right?
Owner and or operator?
Because let's say you lease your.
No.
Township, yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, I think elsewhere in the ordinance, you refer to the operator in some places, owner, operator, maintainer. So, yeah, I think adding operator there is appropriate.
Okay. Uh, the next one. So the mutual approval of the firm selected to do the study exists in all of the analyses that you can require. So I just, I only edit it in one of them. We'll edit it in the rest if you agree with the language. Um, but basically, the way it would write or to read is the applicant shall provide an analysis by a qualified professional third party approved by the township. If. That gives you the authority.
Right, and I jump in and say, anytime that the township is making a decision like that, it cannot be arbitrary. So there would have to be obviously some kind of rational basis for, you couldn't just deny every single third party that they come up with. But if you looked and said, hey, this proposed expert or third party, you know, doesn't have these qualifications or, you know, has been the subject of litigation showing where they've not really done a good job, or whatever other rational basis you might have, then you would retain that discretion. But that is to say, anytime the township makes any decision, there has to be a basis for it. But we don't have to say all that in the ordinance, but I'm saying that is, that's kind of what would go on in the background.
Any questions on that one? So that will be, I'll, I'll make sure that goes in the, wherever we're requiring potential analysis, that language will go in there, that the township approves of the third party.
Laura, what happens in the event that the leaseholder, well, not the leaseholder, but the, uh, solar farm owner is acquired or is, uh, their business is acquired or, I guess, or they're sold off? At what point is the township involved in that process?
Sure, I know your ordinance speaks to what happens with the security. So as long as the security, um, the bonds and such are maintained, it will carry on. So there would, I'm not sure if it provides for notification in here, I'll defer to Mateo.
As far as the ownership changes?
Correct. Or whether that is, or whether that exists elsewhere in the zoning ordinance when there's a new owner operator of a special land use.
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay.
Just speaking of another special land use. Um, and I think, I think your question leads into the next competitive camp.
Right.
Which was, so we had inserted, um, ownership change information as it relates to if the site changes hands, the township needs to identify that, and there's, there's certain information that has to be provided. One of the questions that came up was, um, you know, can we, A, we want to make sure the surety responsibility transfers with the owner, I believe, which basically what we did was, um, the special use permit shall remain in effect provided that the successor owner or operator assumes and writing all of the obligations of the special use permit, site plan approval, surety, and decommissioning responsibility. So we added surety. I, I think you guys had also had a question about whether or not, does, does this totally absolve the seller from any liability on the site? The answer could be yes, or it could be no. And if it's no, what, what can you hold the seller to after transfer?
Right, and typically, we're not going to have a lot of control over what liabilities are assumed in a private purchase of a property or a business. They may assume the liabilities. And, and I do see that language now where they are obligated to notify the township of that change in ownership. But from the township's perspective, the question of going after the previous owner i- is fairly academic because you still have a surety and bond in place. So you're covered financially, you're not going to need to go after. And that's why that decommissioning, that bond, the surety is so important to protect the township.
So that, those, that was the sum of the edits from the last meeting. So if there's, you know, at this point, we have a language in there that addresses the state law for solar system, solar product would be of the state nameplate size. We have our language for anything that would be smaller. And we have the overlay. So if the language is kind of where you guys want it acceptable, then, you know, we get, I, I want, I think the best process is, I mean, we, we talk about battery and wind because I think that the most efficient process is to take solar, battery, wind to the readings, have the public hearings, and to be adopted as opposed to do it one at a time. Because we, we got time, there's definitely a clock ticking. So from a solar perspective, is there anything else solar wise, language wise, that you guys feel should be considered or?
As long as Laura thinks it's.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. Yep.
Good shape?
Good shape to get it to public hearing, perhaps with the wind and batteries we're going to discuss.
As a pretty good template for the next two as well, I would assume, right?
Right, they'll have some unique issues that have to be addressed, but yes.
Sounds good. Then we move into wind and battery. The only thing about going back to the battery with the fire chief skipping, they're, they're.
Hundred percent.
That, that's a real big risk. And when, when, when the professionals say that it's dangerous and, you know, I, I, I mean, we can't flat out deny, deny any use, can we?
Well, here's, here's the conversation that's been taking place, if I may.
Go ahead.
And so is with, with the battery systems, kind of per what we understand there, and the wind systems and kind of their size and imposition that they can create. The conversation at the last PC meeting was, and one of the reasons we, we wanted Laura to come out to help with was, is it feasible for us to require a certain size of these facilities, you know, call it nameplate capacity, in order for them to be allowed? Um, because if you remember the last meeting, we were kind of talking about very small batteries, kind of medium sized batteries, and then the state scale batteries. Um, the one thing to keep in mind, batteries is you don't need a lot to start hitting the state's threshold nameplates, but I'll, I'll kind of transfer to Laura on where that conversation is.
Sure, and, and I will address that. First, let me say to fire, I echo Mateo's statement that you absolutely would want input from your fire department on the detailed requirements specifically for battery because it does present some unique risks. So even if we work together on putting together a draft after this meeting, it would be with an eye toward providing that to the, you know, fire chief, fire department, and others to review and provide their feedback on it. Um, as to the size, there's no requirement that you allow all sizes of these land uses. So if the desire is to say, we allow battery storage of 50 megawatt nameplate capacity or more, and that's what we're going to regulate, then that, in my opinion, is, uh, hi, there's no guarantees in the law or in life, but I think a highly defensible position.
Would this, just a, would the same, how do I to win?
Correct.
Laura, is all battery storage above ground, or do they have some that are underground?
Everything I've looked at has been above ground. I'm, I don't know if you've seen anything underground.
They don't exist. But everything we review and the research we've done cites above ground.
It's certainly, it's an evolving technology, to be sure, but I've seen it above ground.
Can you require that they be all above ground?
I don't see a reason why not. Again, I'm not sure that there are underground. Maybe there are and we just haven't encountered it. But, yeah, especially, again, going back to my statement earlier, having a rational basis. And if there's safety and.
For firefighting purposes.
Exactly, for firefighting purposes.
And also for leaching into the soil and a few other things like that come in line.
Yeah, I think that would be a reasonable and defensible requirement.
So, um, as far as this, I don't know if you saw the.
I did.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is we need to go back to the fire chief and ask him for a list of defensible reasons why, right? So like, I mean, is that what I'm understanding?
What I would say, oh, I'm sorry. What I, what I would take from it is, what would the fire department want to see? What kind of protections? Is it, um, working together on a fire safety plan? Is it having all the, you know, manuals? Is it, is there actually something in the construction and siting of it that should be considered in terms of access, in terms of, you know, things like that?
But I, so, but I, but I would say, not to cut you off, but an important distinguishing item that we should assert is, again, if there's an interest via Laura's advisement, you know, and our assistance, that we're going to kind of set the size in which these systems can exist within the township. Call it 50 megawatts, that triggers the state law. And the, the state law is, they kind of let open edit as to whether or not we can apply additional regulations, like what you're talking about, to them. So I'm just saying, when we talk about offering up the language, it could be to the state size stuff. Does that make sense?
It, it kind of does. Ross, do you think that, uh, either you or Kerry could get those, that those requirements from the fire chief?
Well, from what I've gathered so far, they don't know a whole lot.
Okay.
They want to be directly involved.
That's a, that's a good reason to keep them.
But it is new technology and it is constantly evolving. And they, they just don't have the answers to what specific special equipment or same protocol to go, to utilize to, you know, combat any potential fires or leakages.
Yeah, and that's something that those of us working on it can continue to research as well in the, um, in some of the other, you know, there's some even emerging technologies for fire suppression with that, maybe not so much with battery storage, but with solar, there are some very new technologies for, um, fire resistance that are not really industry wide yet. And then you kind of get into, how much of that are you going to require? If they're not readily available, does that make it, you know? not readily available, does that make it, you know, impractical to? So there's questions to work through, is my point there. But I think that's an important part of the, the conversation as we, as we draft it. I think we need to start, if the, if the planning commission gives us direction tonight as to what that might look like, we can be doing both and, right? We can be working on that draft and working with the fire department, getting information from them and to them about what the best way is to protect the township.
I certainly think we should move forward with it. I mean, we have a little bit of breathing in the last, not-
But not a ton.
Let's not get to the-
Right.
Right to the deadline.
Right.
So, so, I mean, I, I have another question, right? So like, when we asked advisement from Livingston County, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they say, that weren't they just against any sort of onsite battery storage? Like, why is this even a conversation? Like, I guess I'm trying to figure this out.
Yeah, it's a conversation.
Did I miss, I know I missed like a couple sessions, but did I, what did I miss?
Yeah, what did I miss? And because PA 233, the state law deals with wind, solar, and battery storage, if you don't have anything on the books, people will be able to come in and place them in the township, getting approval only from a three-person, state-appointed panel in Lansing, without it going through local. And that's, you know, there's reference to the petition, it's certainly, you know, something that there are people working to put a question on the ballot as to whether PA 233 should be repealed. But where we're sitting right now, we don't know if that will be on the ballot, we don't know if there'll be other challenges. So we have to kind of plan for the eventuality that PA 233 will take effect at the end of November of this year, and to try to make sure, to the extent we can, and the best we can, to retain local control over these land uses.
Absolutely.
And Kevin, the county review prior to PA 233, just so, just so you know, like-
Can we get an update from them?
I don't think their opinion would change, other than what Laura's advising from the perspective of the state.
Okay. I just didn't know if they had, like, also, something we didn't think of. Okay.
Well, I mean, they did help in craft a lot of the solar. I mean, we worked with their review when we were, started drafting this six, seven months ago.
I'm just trying to information gather this.
No, I agree.
Yeah. And the battery storage regulations really wind up looking a lot like the solar regulations, so it's not like we're starting from scratch necessarily, a lot of the same protections, decommissioning, bonding, requirements, all of those. Obviously, it's different technology, but, you know, we'll have those kind of robust provisions in there. And then what Mateo was referencing is, we'll also have, or we'll back up a step, and I kind of explained this at the previous meeting that I attended, but PA 233, assuming it takes effect, speaks to specific topics, right? Like noise, like height, like lighting, and then it leaves everything else silent. So it doesn't talk about insurance, or decommissioning bonds, or even where they can be located. So the way we are crafting ordinances in, in the event that 233 takes effect, to say, okay, okay, we'll take the state's requirements for those narrow categories, we'll give you those, but you still need to comply with these other protections and locational requirements. And do we know exactly how that plays out if there's a challenge to it? We don't yet, but in our, you know, incredible amount of thinking about it and working on it, believe that's the best approach. So that's why we're talking about these things that go a bit beyond the state statute.
Okay, I got a question about the overlay districts. Are we gonna, is, is it common thought to have an overlay district that we, when we were calling it solar, or not, are we now going to call it solar, wind, and battery overlay? So it's all in the same area that we've already defined?
I, I, so, I don't want to punt. I would, I would defer to Laura. I mean, I think that that would be the most efficient way to deal with it, but I, I want to-
I like, well, I like, the, only the two areas we have, they're, you know, right by the highway, they're kind of in the industrial.
No, but if you're playing industrial sites, yeah, yeah. But I would, I would-
Sure. If you have three land uses, you'd want to make sure within that overlay, you have at least three locations, right? One could be solar, one could be wind, and one could be battery. So assuming that that's how it plays out, and I think you have more than three parcels in that overlay.
We have more than three parcels, but two areas.
Two areas.
That, that comprise the continuous part.
So, so what you would want to be sure is that you're, if you were going to have all of them in one overlay, is that there's enough there that all three land uses could be developed? Would be the, the best way. Could you take the position that, nope, we have one, even one spot, we have one spot where we allow these three, and whoever gets there first gets it? You could. I think I'd rather see the ability to at least have all three in the township. That would be a better, something I'd rather defend.
Even though wind is kind of a separate one in and of itself, as far as space and area that it can be in?
Well, you can put them, you could have three different overlays, you could have them in different spots. The question of, can you have them in one overlay? Yes. But I would like there to be enough room in that overlay for all three. But if you say, hey, look, we've got solar and ag, and we want battery storage in industrial, you could have a different location for that.
Okay.
So, with the, with the, the state-sized capacities, we have the solar language that speaks to if you're in that, you know, there's what you have to abide by. And then what else we have, if I'm not mistaken, the way it's written is if you're below that, then here's what you have to abide by. That's the current structure.
Yeah, it's below that, or if PA 233 doesn't take effect.
Okay, alright.
Because we have this, we're in this weird timeframe between now and November where we don't know for sure what's going to happen.
No, I understand. So then, so then I think as far as guiding the next steps, it's really, you know, if we're, if we're writing something that's going to have, that's going to be structured similar to solar, whereas if you're the state, it's, it's Laura's kind of template language. And if you're not, if you're smaller than that, then it's, it's our stuff. It's whether or not you want to go that route with the battery and the wind as far as writing for the, the low, the nameplate levels.
That's what we did for solar, right?
Correct.
So I, I think we should follow the same methodology. I mean, if, if we're going to bring them all together for one public hearing, why would we switch it up?
I guess, I guess only because of the last PC meeting, there was conversations about, is there, is there a way in which you can regulate, it has to be a certain size to come through, right? That the smaller things were not going to be allowed in the township. And we wanted to know from Laura whether or not that was possible. So we're at the junction now, are we going to write for small stuff, or are we going to regulate, or, or allow based on a certain size of the bump? Does that make sense?
So it's-
Try to be as like-
Below the threshold, it's just not allowed?
Right.
Correct.
Is that what you want to do?
Yes. I, I-
That's what we have.
I think we should. That's what I'm, I'm-
Now, that's what you would have for battery and wind.
Right.
We, solar is a different story right now. We have things written for solar below the state threshold.
You like that, Richard? I like that.
And I don't know if we need, and Mateo, we didn't talk about this, if you have, because you are allowed, do you allow residential solar in this?
Yeah, small.
Yeah. So if you have battery storage as part of that residential solar, that would not be excluded by this. We, we just probably want to throw that in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. But otherwise, yes. So what we could do is draft it to allow wind and battery 50 megawatts or more, and then put in other regulations beyond the states and indicate, we kind of still get back to that trigger thing, because if for some reason, the petition's successful, and the ballot measure's successful, we have no PA 233, we don't want to have the state requirements on the books.
Oh, right.
So we may want to have alternat, we can, we can, we can wordsmith that. I, I think we know what we're, what we're saying there, and kind of put it together where, where the township's protected if there is no PA 233 requirement.
Okay. I guess the only other part I would throw in for us to consider is that we, the way I understand solar being set up right now is that the only, the only language, the only regulations are the ones prescribed by the state, and the fact that we've applied it over. The, the overlay's really the only additional requirement on top of the state language. It doesn't defer back to all of the other conditions for the smaller stuff.
So I would disagree with that. Because the way it's written intentionally, and let me pull it up right here. If in the solar, you go to what I call the trigger language, that subsection B, I think, a minus, page 13 of 14. It's honor after November 29th, 2024, if PA 233 is, of 2023 is in effect, then the following provisions apply to utility-scale solar energy facilities with a nameplate capacity of 50 megawatts or more. To the extent these provisions conflict with the provisions in section A above, these provisions control as to such utility-scale solar energy facilities. What I might add there, because actually, I'm really glad you said that, because in a later version of this that I've been working on, I did add a line that I'll add to this. And what that says, to make it even clearer, I have to find it. Sorry, bear with me. And I would propose to add this line as soon as I find it. To make that clearer, it would then say, this subsection does not apply if PA 233 of 2023 does not take effect. But I'm not even sure, here, oh, here, this was, that wasn't it, this was it. To the extent these provisions conflict with the provisions in, in sections A to C above, these provisions control as to such systems. The point being, and we can wordsmith a little bit, all that other stuff, sorry for all the legal mumbo, jumbo there, all that other stuff, decommissioning, insurance, bonds, locational requirements, all of that, that's not covered by the statute, still applies, not just to small ones, but to large ones as well.
And that's where, so, because it's not like that's the way that battery and wind would get, well, no, my apologies, that we would still write additional regulations for battery and wind.
Yes.
And so I just want to make sure the solar kind of plays with that as well, so-
Yes, that, it would be the same structure for both. And I'm going to clarify that language. Whenever somebody asks a question, that leads me to think it needs to be clearer.
No, no, and that's fine. So that, that would be another tweak to the solar language I can put for you guys. But I just want it to be uniform across the three, that there are additional regulations regardless of your size that we are implementing.
Right. It won't be a substantive change, just a word clarity change.
So with that, we've got the tweak to solar, we've got the battery and the wind, which need be crafted in, in a manner that states the size, but then the additional regulations that we'd want to see. I know I had kind of started on some battery stuff using this as a template. I'm assuming that a lot of the studies, analyses, information, including what the fire department may or may not have to add, would be something you guys would want to see in the battery and the wind?
Okay, definitely.
And then, I guess, I, the only other thing I would say is, you know, we, we've talked a little bit about the overlay. Maybe you and I can work together a little bit more on part for an overlay, and whether or not it's-
Yeah, we could provide some alternatives even to say, look, look, if you want them all in one overlay, or, I mean, I guess, is there another spot where the planning commission might want to see battery or wind, other than the current overlay?
I mean, there's two sites, there's two sites that are relatively 80 acres each, comprising of a total offering of 160 acres within the township.
Yeah. And they don't have, I mean, you said two areas contiguous, but they don't have to all be used for one. And what I'm, what I'm getting at is, could you take one of those and do solar on part and have battery storage on part?
I've seen, yeah, just-
Is there enough land there?
Not in totality of the overlay that you would have to do this, that. It could be a little bit of this, a little bit of that.
Right, right. Is there enough land there to engage in all three land uses? And if there is, then maybe you go forward with that.
That would be, you know, that'd be something that you would know more about than we would. But if, as long as, as long as we can have it be as restrictive as possible, and still not get in trouble, you know, get the township in trouble, that's kind of where we're going.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, we talked about it for solar, it seems to work better. You don't need a lot of space to get the state threshold. Wind is the one that I'm trying, can't, I'm-
And that depends as well on some of those setbacks, right? And how, you know, depending on your setbacks, that cuts into the amount of land you have available for the land use. So we would probably have to sketch out a few things with that.
Yeah, and then it is.
But with the state's small setbacks, it really doesn't cut into it as much.
I mean, it's nearest point of adjacent, but it's-
Yeah.
Um, okay. All right, well, I feel like we've got-
Yeah, I think we have our direction and can work on drafts, and certainly, they will continue to be a work in progress, I think, at your next meeting, but you'll at least have something to look at.
Sounds good.
Why don't you excuse her, too?
Yeah, we're, we're, we talked about that.
One question on noise. In our home occupation ordinance, we have, like, we limit the peak noise that a occupation can produce. If we did that with these, would that be outside of PA 233?
So it's a good question. And the question, as I understand it, is regardless of the noise requirements in PA 233, can you just have a police power noise ordinance that sort of supersedes that? I think it's an open question. I don't know if I have a definitive answer. Certainly, they would argue that PA 233 supersedes that, because PA 233 doesn't distinguish between zoning and police power. It just refers to a, you know, compatible renewable energy ordinance. So they might say, hey, if you have an ordinance that restricts our sound below what PA 233 allows, then we get to go to the state to get this approved.
There is noise language in the solar and the state stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and my, what led to my question, because it defines it, if we're the, the nearest outer wall of the nearest dwelling, right? So it, it might be fine there, but if you're some super high decibels right off the unit, right, it still could create problems.
I mean, yeah. I mean, we've got measurements of the facility boundary.
Yeah.
Fifty-five decibels or something.
All right, yeah, let's, let's, keep going forward.
All right.
The only other, one question I had, and maybe yours, is there any other situations where this is, this act is looking to be used further in other industries?
These are the only, I'm, I'm not aware of any. I mean, this certainly has enough pitfalls, and it's keep us busy for a while. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything.
Well, thank you for coming out and have a safe-
Well, thank you, thank you for having me, and see you again next time.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right, so if we can, solar and wind and battery are done. Yes, so now we're going to the- Okay. County's review, Mateo, of the master plan. Take us through this.
So, the Livingston County's back, their review of the master plan, kind of the, the primary comments that were cited was- The reference to that the township felt a wetland ordinance, which is outside of Livingston County, but that they encouraged that the township provides the master plan draft to incorporate the following information from the new, you know, we have the plan of Livingston County High Quality Natural Superior Assessment. And then they provided experts from it. It wouldn't be, I mean, I, I got to kind of defer to you guys as to what you want to do with this or not. As it relates to something like this, where they have this study that they're referring to, or this assessment that they're referring to, it, it's not much to throw text into the master plan referring to the assessment by title. And then if someone wants to go and search that assessment, then they can go look at that, as opposed to inserting all of the assessment's information into the master plan. So-
Reference it, I think that would work. Yeah, I read that. And then I also read their comments about the, encourage us to consider planning some form of public recreational activity. But I remember we were going through that before, I remember John, which I, this point is not here, but he actually brought that up, that that was actually things that we had in-
No.
That he had.
It's in the survey. We had the survey, the catalog, the recreational activities that were within, for the reason of this distance of the township. We didn't include all of that information in there. This expresses that our recreational activities available, not necessarily the township, but-
Right, it is referenced in your goals and objectives.
Yeah, I thought it was. I just remember John brought that up, or found that particular piece.
Yeah, so they did, they did reference the current master plan and the draft master plan as it relates to recreation and space and things of that nature. I think more or less citing that there wasn't space necessarily dedicated to, to township recreation and public recreation. But again, your, your objectives do haul it out as something with a, as a basis for the township to kind of take that up and research whether or not they want to provide public recreation, or, or manners in which that can be met, those recreation needs of the region can be met. But I think their biggest cite was that from a spatial perspective, it's- But I think their biggest site was that from a spatial perspective, it's not reflected in in the, this current master plan, it's part of the area that township one is specifically designated for. That was my interpretation of the comment. There, they had some clarifications, I know the trend volume map they'd stated they thought was, with our understanding of the, if the dots are small.
Yeah, I got that, I saw that.
Yeah, I mean, making an adjustment to a map, that's nothing, make a reference to a study, that's not much, I'm just taking notes while we're...
What did you think of this, Ross?
The comments, a lot of it is, it looks like a lot more than what it really is, like the parks section, for example, and the other one that they recommended, I mean... They are recommendations, so it's at your discretion as to whether or not you want to accept them or...
I think a couple, a couple of things makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of why we're walking through, so if there's minor changes that can be made to address some of those, like Mateo mentioned, referencing that plan to address that first item, if you want to elaborate further on parks, which I believe we have in there that are intended to, we'll get to that, you know, whether that be creating a separate parks plan or what have.
Mateo, what, do, do other townships, do they have like a parks committee or something like that, I mean, how do they handle that?
You know, I feel like a lot of it is, is to scale, right, so townships that are, that are growing and developing, you know, Oxford Township has a Parks and Rec and has, I don't know how many acres, but they do have township owned and operated parks. They also have 20,000 people and, you know, kind of a growing task base, so the resources are there to, you know, undertake those initiatives. Let me, so objective to, under community facilities and public services, ensure adequate and appropriate recreational opportunities for township residents. Identify specific park and recreation needs in cooperation with Livingston County. Explore development of a Parks and Rec plan, investigate development of river access sites, research grant opportunities for parks and recreation, work with Livingston County and ITC for development of trails, require new residential developments to provide recreating areas, open space and parks for residents, and require new residential developments to provide trails and sidewalks.
Yeah, else can you put in there? Well, when we did that, when we, when we talked about that development across Running Lake there, we had, we had, I mean, that didn't go through, but we talked about putting trails and all that through there, so that was something that we were, you know, kind of trying to implement.
Yeah, I mean, before developmental Parks and Rec, I mean, I think if there was, if there's a desire, you know, from the township level to, to take the next step in researching, okay, we want public recreation, where do we want it, what do we want it to look like, what's it going to cause, all that fun stuff, you would undertake a, a study, a Parks and Rec study, develop it.
I think they'd be good to add that.
So like, well, it's there.
It's in there. It's in there, it's in there, but, yeah, but I think we should move forward on it.
Something that needs to be acted on, like, now, first, like, not just, you know, words putting in a, on a sheet of paper, like, we need to get, get some stuff going.
It's also interesting that the main theme of our master plan is to preserve our rural character, and when you add recreation or parks, then, then that draws people, right, which, there, there's a balance, but I think the master plan, as it's written, describes that intent, and obviously, Garrett, like you're mentioning, to take the next step, right, that's the next thing that may, not in this meeting, but...
Is walkways considered a park and recreation, like, well, you know, some cities have pathways?
Yeah, we need a cost analysis here, because like, I mean, I don't think anybody here wants to have their taxes to go up, right, and the thing is, it's inevitable when you put that stuff in place, because then you have maintenance.
You got maintenance.
And maintenance on it is not cheap at all.
You buy a lot, you buy a big piece of risk.
Exactly.
With any type of recreational area.
Like, I mean, I've talked to a couple of the other different, different townships, and I know that there was a couple of them that talked to, they regretted doing the parks, right, because of the tax action that we had to deal with.
We need to take the initial steps to take a look and say, is this something we really need to do?
Cost benefit analysis.
And here's what the costs are, and here's what the implications are. And that's basically what we put in the plan.
We did, yeah.
There's just, like, there's so much heavy traffic, at least our area, White Lake Road, Harton Road, the Urban Road, you got the lakes, you got people that live on the lakes 24/7. I, I mean, I drive it every day, and there's people older than me, there's people that are younger than me, there's kids on bikes, and they're just cruising around the lakes, and it's like one mere knock and someone's going to get hurt, like, I get the, the financial aspect of maintaining it, this and that, but to be honest, like, you can put a pathway right through the front of my property, I don't care, as long as people stay off the road, and I don't have to worry, I got a little girl, I don't want her going down Harton Road getting hit, like, these are things, and I, I know it's not a full park, but is there a way that, you know, pathways of some sort, some nature, where, you know, you got people that, that's what they want to do is walk, right, it's getting nice out, they're out walking around, and then you got White Lake Road with heavy traffic, and there's four people on the side of the road with walking sticks, like, you can't, yeah.
I think, I, I think to start to develop a plan, makes sense, at least to look into it, and to Kevin's point, let's look at the cost, because I know that Green Oak Township, when they, when they put that trail system in, it turned out to be way more expensive than they thought, and then they got sued by a person who wiped out on one of the bridges, and he's not even from there, he's from Southfield, and he's suing him for like, unfortunately, the gentleman lost his eye, but still.
Just make them sign a waiver before they get on the pathway?
Seems like, how do you force that?
So, to your guys' favor, I feel like your master plan gives you...
It gives you a start.
You do what you need to take that.
So what do we need to do with it?
That's all we need.
Well, that's, as far as that, as far as the Parks and Rec conversation.
No, I mean, as far as the whole entire letter, this, this was the last thing, I believe, Ross, we were waiting, and we already got everything from the surrounding townships, correct?
You have this as the last step, I mean, we have the opportunity to, you know, you may want to take some of these comments into account, there's another item on the...
There's a few more that, there's a few more that they flagged, and there's one more that, that we came across in talking about different uses applied to different future land use designations, and I'll get to that one. They do reference that language should be added as it relates to the recent trend of solar and wind development compared to electrical transmission.
Which, what page do you want for that? I'm just trying to...
14.
14.
I think that, I mean, I think that you could, I think you're also doing that by drafting these ordinances as it relates to local and state control. What lang, if you were to insert language, you, you would need to kind of follow the intent of what we're doing right now, because if it contradicts it, that's, that's not the position you want to be in. So you can either leave it as is, or leave it be without that language in there, or we can draft up something that, that plays to the current intent of what we're doing.
Yeah, because what I guess I would like to see is maybe a recommendation from you on which of these issues are items that we really need to put into the plan.
So I would say that language as it relates to the renewable energy, that in a, in a sense complements what we're doing, would be good, because it's something that's going to continue to come up.
I'd want, I'd want Laura to, to come up that list.
I, it would, I mean...
And nothing to get to, you know.
No, 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 nothing.
You know, you know where, not...
No, 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 for me, it would be nothing, it would, it would be nothing more than, you know, probably in addition to one of your goals and objectives, and something that is, is relatively general from the perspective of, you know, wanting to, to monitor and regulate those developments based on the, the safety and, you know, something of that nature, it would not be exhaustive, it would not be a full chapter on page, I mean, it would be, it'd be a sentence or two in an objective. Still, if Laura can, you can involve her however you would like, but just so you understand the scale of what I'm talking about.
What I'd like to do on this, Mateo, is consolidate, and I'm not, don't mean to interrupt you, but I do want to, but if you can consolidate all your points of what we're talking about, because we're talking about a bunch of different things, and just give us a, like, a one-page bullet point of, these are things we're going to add to these sections, that way we can kind of know from this where we're going to, where we're going to put our change in the plan a little.
So you would like to see of, of the changes recommended here, what we would recommend?
Yeah, synthesize it down, I mean, because this is, this is 25 pages worth of adjustments in there, and I, we're not going to make all of those.
No.
Yeah, I mean, for, for us, it's, you can reference the study, the language for solar, the renewable, and just see how people was, there was the quick adjustment to this traffic volume map, and then let me just, let me just quickly go through, because I did flag ones that I thought. It's going to be somewhere, and then, Parks and Rec we discussed, so I think that was, yeah, I think it was referenced to solar energy, adjusting wind maps and referencing the study that they, the area plan that they had done. The other item that had come up is that in assigning future land use, like, different uses that can fall into your different future land use designations, one thing that did exist in the 2012 plan that does not exist in this one is extractive mining uses. That, that has, well, that needs to go into one of the future land use designations that you have now, because it's, it's referenced in your prior plan, it needs to carry over into this. From the perspective of, again, that's another, you know, state regulated use that has certain requirements, but should those requirements be met, you know, then, then local municipalities need to allow for them. So it would be if, you know, the extractive mining use could go under one of the future land use designations, which, there is, we had discussed later, the potential for...
So would extractive mining also include pumping water out?
You mean, like, after the, like, reclamation after they're done?
No, like for mire drinking water.
It's for industrial, it focuses on aggregate.
Yeah.
So there really isn't anything that we have that would discourage the use of somebody putting in a big well and, and having a, a water party and then trying to pay the state and we get nothing out of it. I mean, I, that's, that's a concern with me, is the water.
Well, that's a little, I don't know.
We never hear of a water park.
I, I don't believe that our ordinance addresses any of issue like that, but it would not specifically fall under extractive industrial.
Well, I know they got that big one up, Ice Water, I think, is huge.
Ice Mountain.
Yeah.
It's up in, and certainly...
Like Stanton or someplace up there, but I, I don't particularly want that in my backyard either. So if you could add that in there.
Well, as far as, from the perspective of like, water extraction, like, where, where in the future?
For commercial purposes.
Right, but, but where it would be allowed in the future land use designations, or where it could be in the future land use designations?
The only place I could see them doing that is in a swamp someplace.
Is there a whole mention of it now? No, I don't think that we're able to really accomplish that, not having the use in the original or in the previous master plan.
That one, that one I want to do some more work on, only because the extractive aggregate came from the fact that it's in 2012, it's not here, you know, it should be.
Yeah.
From a continuity perspective, the water element that I probably would want to do more work on.
Because that's our most important resource here, and I really don't want to see it chipped down the road.
With, with that in mind, is there a particular designation that you could see the, I guess, planning for the extraction use?
Do we have any existing operations going on?
We do, yep.
Yeah.
That should be where they should be then, right?
So that, right now, we have no other properties that are zoned EI, we only have one pit that is EI and that's the only one currently legally in operation right now. The other one, there was consent judgment, there's actually zone R2, and that operation has ceased, and there is a final basis of reclamation on that one. There's always a potential that someone could come in and want to open up a new extractive industrial operation, and for that reason, we, we do want to focus on where an appropriate area would be in the future land use designation, like, for example, I, I think in our 2012 master plan, basically anything FR or RE could potentially be rezoned EI for our existing future land use map. I think this time, you may want to consider, you know, limiting that further, knowing that we already know we have one operation currently, we have one right in Deerfield, which we have a truck haul route through, which is causing some issues. So I mean, I, I would say you'd want to limit it to an area more for a...
Commercial.
An industrial.
Yeah.
I mean, it's extractive industrial, right, so...
Put it in the industrial.
Well, so you've got, you've got planned industrial and you've got planned commercial, and planned industrial is also when we're talking about renewable energy, and from a perspective of stacking less desirable use and less desirable use all in the same area, again, Laura's left, even she was saying, just from the renewable energy perspective, do we have enough land dedicated to that? You may want to consider, you know, opening potentially like planned industrial and planned commercial. They're, both of them in the future land use map are kind of adjacent to US 23, freeway entrances and exits, which maybe speaks somewhat to truck traffic and giving us a freeway quicker...
I think that makes sense.
But again, I...
It's right on, it's right on little 23. If I'm looking at that correctly, on page 22.
Least impact, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, you're not going to be going down Coleman Road.
That's kind of where I would...
Yeah.
So that gives you an idea anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, that's, those are the items that we have passed you, is the, the reference to renewable energy, reference to the study, the adjustment of the map, and then designation of, of where the...
Should we bring this back one more time, Ross, before we send it on? Yeah, I think we need to accept the recommendations.
You're comfortable, you have direction as far as the, the revisions to make?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with the thing that we need to adjust.
We could come back and review the edits that Mateo has made, which would send us back, or you could potentially make a recommendation for township board approval, conditional upon...
I'd rather see it like that.
I'd rather see it.
Yeah, well, let's, let's spend another month and we'll, we'll go through it one, one more time, and that way we've incorporated that, and we've, we've looked at it. I totally trust you, Mateo, but I just think we should see the finished thing before we send it on.
I got you.
Okay, we'll see that in, in May, and then we'll, at that point, I would hope we make a recommendation to send it to the board.
Yeah, I don't think we've got anything earth shattering.
All right, then, we're moving right along tonight. All right, I think we're all done with old business, so we're going to go back to the final call to the public before miscellaneous business. So, here first. All right, Scott, once again, first of all, I want to know why wasn't the public notified earlier on this marijuana facility, why it was all done behind closed doors? They weren't notified, other than they knew it was going anyway, but there was no, when all the discussion was going behind the scenes, we should have been notified, I mean, it should have been brought to the attention here, I'm sorry, this is not going to be... The public hearing was posted, the paper, I believe, was the 24th, okay? It was posted online on what, the 8th, yesterday? You're talking 16, was it 16 days? I got 129 pages to review in 24 hours. That's not right. I'm not a lawyer, but I mean, I want to read something and try to understand, I can call Ross, or anybody can call Ross, and get some questions answered, I asked them tonight, thank you very much, Ross, I appreciate you. Thank you very much, Ross, I appreciate you. How can we stop anything else like this from happening? Can we draw up something for zoning right now, so somebody else can't just move into my house right now and start doing it? We should have done it after the day pulled up last time. Can we do something emergency, have something drawn up quick, and just blow it through, and then add it out of the, onto our, um, master plan? Law enforcement's here, we'll see if he was, there may be a chase away. Uh, I guess we're too mean. Um, I think, in light of the situation, the lies and stuff like this, and we denied this, I don't know what's the truth. Ross is in charge with the supervisor, I think would be a damn good idea that law enforcement goes out there, puts a cease and desist on the place, and everything removed off the property till it's approved, confiscated, he's illegal, he's illegal. I really think the feds are gonna be bought in if he isn't, if he's not covered by state law, feds can take him, because he, you know, feds don't really get involved, but come on. Here's another thing you guys were talking about, we're talking about water, and it's a big thing, is these drones, and we've not discussed drones, delivery drones, I don't necessarily want drones buzzing over my head all day, delivering packages. I mean, it's a big problem, I am, as I saw about doing it, and we see there be more and more drones. And I want, I don't want my neighbors with cameras buzzing over my property, looking in my windows. I mean, it's more commercial than I worry about residential, but I mean, they're talking more and more about these drones, you see what they're doing in our wars, what are they gonna do in our neighborhoods? I mean, you know, one drone is just, you hear them going over, and you've got a bunch of them buzzing back and forth, I mean, it's not, they're not little bees, so, I mean, that's something we should look into, I mean, I hate to put too much on your plate, but this is our future. Thank you, Steve. Oh, oh, sorry about that, we'll get you next.
No, that's fine.
At Murray, we're on Germany Road, and as a, uh, resident of Tyrone Township and a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the lack of competitive bids on all the township projects, whether it's pre-trimming on a road, maintenance for the building, but the last one here is really outstanding, where the, uh, water well is gonna be drilled to support the fire department. You only have two bids, one that's close to two hundred thousand, and the other is just under sixty thousand, there's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars difference. A lot of us residents here have wells, I have one, all my neighbors are on wells. So because of that, in this area, whether it's Howe, Fenton, Lyndon, Holly, it only takes you a half an hour to go on the computer, and you'll have a list of over thirty well companies. They pop right up. I personally went to both, two premier well drilling companies, Brown Welling and Adams Welling. They know nothing about this quote whatsoever to put a well in at the corner of Alloy Drive and Fenton Road, they know nothing about it. But they did tell me, if it opens up again for some reason, they're more than willing to put a bid in. This is not a good way to do business, only two quotes for a project of that size. And whether you're pre-trimming on a road and you get twenty-two thousand dollar bid, there should be a lot more quotes. For this one in particular, there should have been a minimum of five competitive quotes, if not a lot more. I said, I got on the computer, I was leaving on in a half an hour, and I looked up thirty companies that are capable of doing this job, and we have only two quotes. Not a good habit to get into. So I'd like to see an improvement, you know, keep in mind, have these other projects come up, whether putting a roof on the old township hall or whatever, let's get bids. We should be able to do that, and sit down and do a comparison. And speaking of that, I personally got all the bids for putting that foundation in, for moving the township hall, I got four bids, three from local people, one in Ollie. We picked the cheapest one, they did a fantastic job, there was no issues at all. And I got two bids to move that building, and if you go back to, it's like the summer of 2021, they had a survey stating it was gonna cost a hundred and twenty-five.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Okay, well, something to consider, I'll be back for the next meeting.
Yeah, it's right here.
Hey, Brett, again, hey, I got a question for you guys, um, with the wind, solar, and battery, um, do they have like a schematic, a layout of what it takes to this system? You know, because you have solar panels, and you have batteries, you guys keep talking about everything as a battery, or a windmill, or a solar panel. I mean, as far as I, I know, don't you have to have, uh, you know, a battery, a storage capacity to pump that back into the line? Or do you just hook up the panels and then hook it right into the wires? Because they keep separating all this. I mean, I know people that have these systems, and everybody that has one of them has batteries on both of them to store the energy, right? So is that something that you can answer? Do they, they just put a couple solar panels in and pump it into a fourteen thousand volt line, or what's going on? Does the state offer you anything? I mean, we're being, we're trying to be reactive and not proactive. You know, we, we're trying to find out, but you guys are guessing if you don't have a schematic. I mean, the last meeting that we had, there's sixty-one pages on the party store on how everything's gotta be. So does anybody, is anybody seeing the master plan from them of how one of these systems work? Are we just guessing?
We're not supposed to have a back and forth, but we don't have any applications yet, so there's nothing for us to see.
Well, I know, but if the state of Michigan is gonna be passing this PC 233, or whatever that is, you would think that they would have a generic, if you guys are gonna have one of these, okay, we're gonna have, for every windmill, we gotta have thirty-five lithium ion batteries. No?
I mean, I see both ways, I'm not supposed to have back and forth, but I see both ways.
Okay, I appreciate it, Kevin, I really do. A lot of the shit could stop, but people would just answer like you are. They're not hard questions, I'm not trying to pigeonhole you guys, I'm legitimately curious. So you're not gonna answer it?
We have nothing to review.
Oh, okay, so nobody, so nobody knows, the system could be like nuclear fission and all that, and we're just gonna say, oh, well, we didn't have that in our master plan, sorry, you got one over on us. But I would think that anywhere there's a windmill, there're gonna be a battery bank, or if there's solar, there's going to be batteries. Okay, so nothing. All right, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Can we leave your camera back there, please?
No, it's your regulation that I can't be separated from this, from your resolution. I'm not allowed to be separated from my camera equipment, so I'm complying with what your resolution is.
So I have, uh, comments about the, uh, the resolutions to extend the, the moratoriums for wind, solar, and, uh, battery, that was done at the board meeting, but it's related to the master plan, because in here, it does say, uh, you know, the township, uh, adopt reasonable regulations to control, establish a commercial, large-scale, solar, and then wind, and there's all three of them. But it says, um, whereas, uh, Tyrone Township is be, beginning the process, or in the process of reviewing the master plan, great, and is zoning, we've got that, uh, for the purpose of updating and including recognition of commercial, large-scale solar systems. The township has, has an emerging land use in the region, and, whereas, integration of commercial, large-scale solar energy systems land use within the township's existing land use requires suitable regulations and controls to ensure compliance with the township's master plan. Well, I don't understand, this language is confusing and maybe opening up a hole, a loophole for people coming in. Why? Because the current master plan is what? Two thousand twelve. There is no compliance for solar in the two thousand twelve plan, and the current plan that you're working on is the proposed plan, it is not enacted yet, it's not been passed by the board. What, I want to know from you guys, what, look into this, are we leaving ourselves a hole with the language that's been used in these three resolutions at the board that affect the master plan by talking about the master plan, the one that's in place two thousand twelve, versus the proposed master plan that we've been discussing here? So I'd ask you guys to look into that, because this language could leave us open, perhaps, for some sneaking in something, because the old master plan doesn't have anything, and there's been no work in this environment on anything to do with the old master plan. The two thousand twelve master plan has not been touched, it's been scrapped for the new one. So please help to under, give us understanding of what that means. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanette. Um, just to, uh, expand on that, I asked the supervisor at the board meeting if he would read what they, the moratorium, if he, uh, if he would read them aloud to what they were doing, he refused to, so the audience didn't know what they were voting on, and I doubt that the whole, uh, board knew what they were voting on, but the language in it, as Chris said, is incredible. And it does say, you guys are actively working on the master plan to include this in the master plan. I didn't hear any, I heard you discuss it, whether or not you might put it in there. Moratorium says you're working on it. Um, I, uh, would ask that at miscellaneous business, that one of you would bring up, uh, would say that, uh, make a motion, whatever, for an agenda item next time, because it's too late tonight, but to discuss the ordinance that will ensure that this doesn't happen again, that we have an ordinance that puts these types of marijuana caregivers in commercial areas. So if somebody could do that tonight during miscellaneous business, that would be great. And number two thing that should be, go on the next agenda, is what Scott said, the discussion of what can be done about this facility that's there now, they don't, obviously didn't get approved, and now what is gonna happen with it? So if someone could suggest that, that would be, uh, very much appreciated. And I also want to say about the master plan, I'm glad that you're carrying it over, thank you, Steve, for doing that, because there are things in there that need to be discussed, that the residents, um, would be interested in if they had had time to read it. And one of them, they strongly admonished you guys, and they say that we looked at the meeting minutes, and we saw the residents weren't happy about stuff, and they said that you left out sections from the two thousand twelve master plan when they should have included them in the new draft. That's what it says in the county's review, and so we can't gloss over that. This, that, that review needs to be taken seriously. It's on page one-twenty of tonight's, um, uh, agenda handout. Um, so, uh, they also said they brought up a couple things, and I'm just gonna point it out, a couple things that I brought up, that other people brought up, that you guys maybe didn't even say thank you for your comment, and then you just ignored us. And now we have the county saying, those things need to go in there. Maybe, maybe, try listening to the residents, we know a little bit, we're concerned, we love this place, we have good ideas. Steve, I asked you how many times in emails you said you'd answer me? Nope. And I asked you about the wind, battery, and solar, moratoriums, and the ordinances for those. And not one of you could let me know, you know what, we're talk, we're gonna be talking about it. Just ignore the residents, you just keep ignoring them. Please stop doing that, what you did tonight was right, but you need to start doing more, whatever.
Any other public comment? All right. Okay.
I just want to say thank you for listening to us, because we've been here before, but please put something in the master plan, so I don't have to come back and do this again, and hopefully sleep well at night, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll go to miscellaneous business, all right. But yeah, three, three things on miscellaneous business, I'd like, uh, everyone, just to take a quick look, we got the notification for Holly's master plan, if, if everyone has a minute just to go on their website, and I, I think, just look up their future land use, uh, map at least, and make sure that it's, there's not anything on that's glaring that people are, are budding. Holly Township might be upset if we see they're gonna put a gravel plant or something right next to some of her residential, so just check that out, so we can, uh, you know, you don't, we don't need to do anything formal on that, but I just think it's something that everyone should take a look at. Um, I do agree, we should have something on this medical marijuana thing to get it out of the residential. I, 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 I would like to put that on the agenda.
Thank you.
And I would like to have that, because I wouldn't want that next to me, I certainly wouldn't want that next to, you know.
Yeah, but is it up to us or is it up to the board? It, it would be as. I said, is that up to us or is that up to the board? Because I think that's a board.
You can't make your agenda?
No, 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 but.
They're an advisory board.
We're an advisory board.
They do take direction from the township.
But, but we can discuss it, we can discuss it.
We have to get authorization from the board, that's a little, yes.
So, and, and we, we are responsible for the ordinance, right? Yes. Whatever we recommend, the township board has to approve, like Ross said.
Right, we can talk about it, and recommend it until that, but we can't.
But Ross, I think the last time that we discussed this, there was a question, and we did get in that meeting, confirmation, yeah, we can restrict where, but I don't know if we got our attorneys' final say on that or not, from that last time, but.
I, I know that there was a lot less known at that time, possibly, potentially, than now as far as case law. Um, I, I know that we, I've, I've heard conflicting legal opinions on whether it's okay to just say, no residential whatsoever, um, persons allowing it in a rural type residential, but it's not a hundred percent clear, I don't know if there's a new case law, or maybe a little.
Yeah, this might be worth it if we're gonna have it as an agenda item.
Yeah, well, you know, the one thing is that the MMA, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, uh, was in place before, uh, the constitutional amendment that allowed recreational marijuana.
Yes.
And for the large part, uh, most places have not had requests for the caregivers, because monetarily it hasn't been worth the, the effort to do, it says people can pretty much grow their own, because the MMA requires that you have, be under a doctor's care, or have a prescription.
It's just a card.
Yeah. So.
It's easy to get anybody to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody can get it.
So, anyway, the, the issue is that, uh, the MMA thing kind of felt, you know, away once you could grow your own, so.
But I still think we should bring it up.
I'm not saying it should, that's, that's precisely what we're.
And then another item, um, in addition to that, which I'm sure the, the board will be a hundred percentage okay with that, um, we, we are sure gonna wanna revisit our current, uh, extractive industrial standards, because that, that's also a hot topic that the state's consistently trying to take away local control, uh, we want to review what we have, make sure it's consistent with the current laws on the books, and, you know, compared to what, what else might be coming down with the pipeline of the state.
And then my, and then my last thing that I had on the miscellaneous, unless anyone else has anything, is the workshop next week.
Yes.
Is there enough to, I'm not gonna be here, I'm gonna be out of, out of the state, but is there enough for us to have that?
I, I do not know at this time.
Okay.
We will not have the solar when any of that.
Oh, no.
With adequate time, um, I, I mean, we may be able to start discussing potentially MMA stuff and/or extractive industrial, but that would just kind of be starting from scratch, initial introduction discussion.
Anyone know if they're available?
I don't know if it's really enough to warrant, uh, you know, holding the workshop, but I'll, I'll probably have a better idea by the, I'd say by Thursday, and see if we can really discuss this.
Wednesday, I, I'm gonna be out of state, we don't do Teams anymore, Zoom, so, I guess let us know.
Yeah.
And if we get good participation, it'd be worthwhile.
Sounds good.
As long as it's before nine-thirty, I'll be here.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.
No, we gotta have a, we have a, we have to shake a motion to adjourn.
I just made a motion.
Support. Okay, motion and support to adjourn. All in favor?
Yep. Yes.
Thanks guys, good discussion.
Scott.
Scott.
There are certain, there, there are certain things we can just. The double housing meetings act, they have a list.
This is why I'm confused, cause my other.
The, the thing, it says basically, if every item on the agenda has been. I said, now that we're safe, could you say that this is adjourned, but I think for purposes of, of the road.
So what you have to do is that's, that's, that's federal air space, it's not something that. You have, there's, so, right, so there's like 400 feet above, but all of it's regulated by the. They're coming down here around 400 feet, so, and that depends unless they have the license. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm a pilot, so, yeah, so, so there's that space, so they're going to stay above that 400 space.
I was talking about deliveries, I mean, the deliveries are going to be down in the space.
No, well, they're going to be landing down. That's, that's part of, that's part of.